Oh, here.
Aw, thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Oh, I see. You really.
Well, good evening. I'd like to call us all to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the board, I'd like to motion to approve the agenda for April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five as presented. Your Jane as first and Mark as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we have student board representative. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Charles.
Thank you, President Blair. Our student board representative this month is from Sager Middle School. And as you know, the purpose of the Student Board Rep program is to honor and recognize talented students, elevate student voice, and provide growth opportunities in the areas of public speaking, leadership, and governance. Students are selected for this honor by their principal with input from the student body. They have an opportunity to prepare and deliver a short speech to the board and the public that is focused on their school or the district. And with that, I'd like to invite Principal Dr. Amy Bemke to the podium to introduce our board rep from Sager Middle. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Amy Bemke, and I am the principal at Sager Middle School. Thank you for this amazing opportunity. I'm excited to introduce our student representative, Tejas Murathe. He is currently an eighth grade student at Sager. He has been a leader during his entire Sager experience. He is passionate, driven, genuine. He's engaged in his education. He's also very aware of the importance of human connection with his peers and the adults on a daily basis. So I'm very honored to introduce Tejas. It's been an honor to witness him flourish over the past few years, and I'm excited to see what happens in his future in high school and beyond. So I would like to introduce Tejas.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I sincerely appreciate this opportunity given to me to speak here today. I want to sincerely thank my principal, Dr. Bemke, for this chance. Your support means a lot. Let me begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to the staff and faculty members of Sager Middle School. Every day, they go above and beyond to create a positive and healthy learning environment. Their dedication to academic excellence and personal growth is truly remarkable. Whether through engaging lessons or providing guidance, they play a crucial role in shaping our educational experiences. Additionally, their efforts extend beyond the classroom, offering support through extracurricular activities and fostering an inclusive community. We are fortunate to be in an environment that promotes both intellectual and personal development. I would like to thank every member of our school community for their hard work and commitment to making Sager Middle School a place where we can all thrive. As I take a moment to express my gratitude to our staff members, I would like to specifically acknowledge Mr. Lent, Mrs. Flood, and Ms. Giljam for their support and dedication. Mathematics has always been a subject that has sparked my curiosity, and last year, I was eager to explore math competitions. To pursue this interest, I reached out to our gifted program director, Mrs. Flood. She expressed enthusiasm for the idea and discussed it with the other math teachers. After further conversations, the initiative was successfully implemented this year, and for the first time, Sager Middle School participated in the Math Counts competition. Following several months of preparation, students were selected to represent our school at the chapter competition, and I was fortunate to be among them. Let us now transition from discussing mathematics to the overall academic environment at my school. I consider myself fortunate to be part of the Francis Howell School District, which offers distinctive opportunities. We are the only district that provides foreign language instruction as early as the eighth grade, and the only district that allows students to advance by two years in mathematics in St. Louis. These initiatives cater to students with varying learning paces, enabling them to achieve their academic goals while continuing to develop their intellectual capabilities. For instance, in fifth grade, I took an assessment that granted me eligibility to enroll in a seventh grade math class during my sixth grade year. The following year, I advanced to Algebra I, a nine-grade level course while still in seventh grade, placing me two years ahead of my grade level. Currently, I am enrolled in Honors Geometry, German I, and ninth grade Science as my high school courses. At Sager, numerous awards are presented to honor student achievement. One such award introduced this year is the Sager Star Award, which is teacher-nominated. Each instructor had the opportunity to nominate one student who exemplified leadership in academic excellence. I am proud to have been selected as a recipient of this award. Additionally, there are other awards available to students which will be distributed at the end of the academic year. While academic achievements and opportunities such as Math Counts competitions and the Sager Star Award have been incredibly formative, there are other experiences from middle school that have equally prepared me for high school. As we all know, transitions can be challenging. This shift from middle school to high school can sometimes feel overwhelming, whether it's the new environment, the increased responsibilities, or the uncertainty about what to expect. Fortunately, my time at Sager played a critical role in easing those transitions and helping me face high school with greater confidence and a sense of readiness. I believe that going to school is more than excelling in academics. I believe it is making connections and bonding with people along the way. I have been blessed because I am surrounded with people that are ready to help me any time of the day. I would like to give a special shout-out to my school counselors, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Braden, and Ms. Kuhnover. I am a person that likes to have things planned out and ready for the future. In my years at Sager, I've had countless meetings with the counselors, and they have helped me and guided me a lot throughout my years. One memory that I'll never forget is when I got a chance to go on my first educational trip alongside a teacher that has supported me throughout my middle school years, Mrs. Flood. We both got the chance to go together to Costa Rica through a company called EF Tours. In Costa Rica, I made new connections and many friends whom I still talk to. I experienced a completely new culture, tried foods I had never seen before, and saw some of the most beautiful views in nature, waterfalls, beaches, and wildlife that I'd only ever seen in pictures. Every day felt like a new adventure, and it made me more curious about other places, too. That trip didn't just teach me about Costa Rica. It taught me more about myself, about being independent, open-minded, and willing to try new things. Looking back, it was one of the best experiences of my life. Before I leave the podium today, I would like to say one last thing. Education is not just about reaching goals. It is about the people who guide us, the experiences that shape us, and the journey that teaches us who we're becoming. Thank you all for your time.
And now for our spotlight. Oh, excuse me. Sarah, did you want to welcome our student onto? Mark, would you want to help him?
Welcome. You are just as much of a member as we are this evening. One thing that you cannot do is vote, but if you have questions or have anything that you would like to say, please feel free to grab Director Oki's mic and ask away.
All right, yeah.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Great honor. Thank you.
And now for Spotlight. Turn back over to Ms. Charles.
Great. For our Spotlight presentation tonight, we're going to learn more about the Spartan math team at Sager Middle. And I'll invite our student presenters and two of the club sponsors, Ms. Karen Flood and Ms. Emily Giljam, to come forward to kick things off for us.
Good evening. We'd like to thank the Board of Education for having us here tonight. We'd like to congratulate Mr. Blair with his new appointment. We'd like to welcome our newest members and thank our returning members for their service to the Francis Howell community. We'd also like to give a huge shout-out to Dr. Bemke for choosing our team tonight and to Tejas for such a wonderful speech. We are very excited to be here. I'd like to start by introducing my team. Unfortunately, my team is not here tonight. Mr. Lent was unable to attend, and Ms. Giljam was struck ill at the end of the day today. So I am Karen Flood. I am part of the Gifted Program. Austin Lent and Mrs. Giljam represent our math team. And if you don't recognize Mr. Lent, perhaps you might recognize this guy, as he was Teddy Roosevelt in his stage debut in our Sager musical Newsies this year. But we are here to talk about math, so we are going to start off the same way one of our club meetings would start off, and that's with some warm-up problems. All three of the problems that we're going to show you here tonight were solved by our middle school group. And paper and pencil ready if you'd like to work alongside with us? Let's start with an easy one. So here is a nice power of two thousand twenty-four. Anyone? All right. No calculator as you solve for b here? And what would a good warm-up be without a word problem? So if you're reading those the same way I am, you'd be amazed to see how fast our students would answer these questions. In fact, if I would read that out to you aloud, I would already have hands in the air of students who are able to answer this question. That shows a lot about our students' skill and the wonderful strategies that they're learning from. Mr. Lent and Coach Giljam, not me so much with math, but I am so honored to be part of the club. Our club does meet twice a month, and we are involved in two programs through the Math Counts program. We have the National Math Club, where students are given a different avenue of math to explore every month, and the Math Counts competition, where they have an opportunity to compete against students from St. Louis and St. Charles area at local, state, and national levels. We have two students here that are going to be talking to you tonight. Henry will be talking to you about the National Math Club, and Prithik will be talking about Math Counts. And we do have students in our club from sixth to eighth grade that are representing pre-algebra through geometry, honors geometry at Sager.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today, members of the board. My name is Henry Tanyas from Sager Middle School, and I'm here to speak about the math program. When I first heard of the math program, I was excited. It was mathletes. I would learn advanced math concepts. I walked into Mr. Lent's room and saw a lot of my friends there. They were also enthusiastic about this new learning opportunity. There was a complicated math problem on the board of a pentagon, a dotted triangle, and a circle around that pentagon. Then, after a quick lesson in math to those who weren't in geometry, we were put in teams and started to solve it. We were doing things that were challenging and would help us learn and grow. I went home and told my little brother, August, all about it. He says he is going to middle school in two years. And when he does, he says the first thing he's going to do is join the math club. He's that excited. I love the math club and will continue next year. Thank you for your time.
Hello there, board. I'm Prithik Krishnaswamy, and I had the honor of representing Sager at the St. Louis Math Counts Competition. Out of a hundred and fifty competitors, we had nine people representing Sager. When you're in a competition with that many people, it's a different feeling than competing at the school level, or maybe just some friendly competition. For me, I've had experience competing once in elementary school. I actually made it to the state level, and I was pretty confident I would this time also. But something I realized was the difference between the competition then and the competition now. I had high expectations for myself, but I was surprised by the intense competition there was. It was a sort of humbling experience. However, that experience drives me to do even better next year, to work even harder, and to push myself till I can really perform at my best ability. The knowledge that I've gained from the opportunity of competing, I never would have gained that knowledge without Mr. Lent, Ms. Flood, and Ms. Giljam putting in the time and effort to make these things happen. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Oh, and I forgot, I had pictures of them at competition to show during that. So Ms. Coach Giljam did have a statement that she's not here, so I'm going to read that for you real quick. As you've heard from our incredible students tonight, the Spartan math team is more than just numbers and equations. It is a place where curiosity meets challenge and where students build their confidence, teamwork, and problem-solving skills. Looking towards next year, one of our biggest goals is to open the door for any middle school in the district to join us at the Sager competition, so more students can experience the excitement of competing, collaborating, and discovering what they're capable of. Thank you to everyone who cheered us on this year and believed in our students, and thank you again for having us here tonight. Without math, life doesn't add up.
And now we move to patron comments. During patron comments, residents of the district and staff members are invited to address the Board of Education on issues related to the school district. Speakers are called forward in the order of sign-up, and each speaker has three minutes to make their remarks. Please remember that only one speaker is allowed at the podium at a time, and combining time or giving your time to someone else is not permitted. The Board appreciates that you have taken the time to come this evening, and we value both your input and perspective. I'd like to remind everyone that we expect the speakers will remain civil and respectful when giving remarks. If anyone fails to comply with board policies, regulations, and rules, we reserve the right to cut those three minutes short. We also ask that patrons of the audience remain quiet in order to be respectful of the speakers' allotted time. And at this point, we welcome Felicia Hines Thapa to the podium.
Good evening. This is my eighth and final year teaching for the Francis Howell School District, and I am one out of six librarians choosing to leave the FHSD libraries. During this time, I have served Independence Elementary School as their library media specialist. I am speaking tonight because I had previously lost hope in Francis Howell leaders, but tonight I have gained hope that wrongs will become righted. In recent years, FHSD leadership has made decisions that have fostered inequality and exclusion, decisions that run counter to the fundamental principles of public education. The previous board implemented book collection policies that prioritize the personal beliefs of adult community members over the needs and rights of students to access diverse, age-appropriate literature. They removed librarians, the book experts, from the book challenge committee, silencing those best equipped to evaluate literature. They discontinued our district's subscription to Brain Pop without consulting librarians, the resource experts, who understand its value in the classroom. Most concerning of all, the previous board consistently failed to recognize the dignity and worth of our most vulnerable student populations, students who deserve to see themselves and their histories reflected and respected in our classrooms, our curriculum, and our libraries. I didn't want to leave Francis Howell or my role at Independence, but as the district drifted from the ideals of public education, I began searching for a place that better aligned with my values. Renee Brown's words guided me. Integrity is choosing courage over comfort. It's choosing what's right over what's fun, fast, or easy. And it's practicing your values, not just professing them. That quote stayed with me as I looked for a district that truly supports inclusion and access for all students. Integrity is choosing courage over comfort. It would have been comfortable to stay, to keep working alongside colleagues and students I love, and a library I've poured my heart into. But when comfort means silence in the face of injustice, courage must speak louder. It took courage to acknowledge that I could no longer serve fully in a system that was moving away from the values I hold dear. It's choosing what's right over what's fun, fast, or easy. Change is never easy, especially when it means leaving a school that has shaped me. But choosing what's right meant standing up for inclusive practices and every student's right to feel seen, safe, and valued. It meant making the difficult decision to walk away when I saw those priorities being deprioritized by the previous board. And it's practicing your values, not just professing them. I believe in the power of education to uplift all students, regardless of their race, identity, background, or beliefs. In my next district, I will be joining a community that actively supports inclusion, student-centered education, where all learners feel seen, valued, and supported through meaningful policies and practices. I'm not leaving because I've lost faith in public education, but because I still believe in it.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Up next is Chris Hyman. Chris Hyman? Up next is Harry Harris.
Thank you. First off, I want to say, Felicia, your speech was moving, and you are appreciated. And I thank you for all the work that you've done. And I, on behalf of our district, I'm sorry that we're losing somebody like that. On that note, congratulations to all of our new board members and to the new positions. We are really looking forward to a new day here. I know a lot of us have been invested in a lot of time and energy, and we're hoping that you guys will really get us moving in that right direction. But we can't ignore the pain in the current history of our district and our community. In the days since the election, I've heard of a number of discussions from community members about what they would like to see. I've definitely heard, as you just heard from Felicia before me, restoring the use of Brain Pop seems to be a pretty universal chant. I would ask that you all meet with our librarians and really listen to them and not just hear the words coming out of their mouths, but hear those deep concerns, like she just expressed, about how they're being treated and about the book materials. I've heard quite often regarding the resolution against racism and discrimination's removal. It's been six hundred and thirty-seven days since it was removed, and same time period that we were promised from Director Ponder that he worked with the community to establish a new one. We have not had that yet. There have not been those discussions, even though many of us have offered to have those. Many have posted that they want it back, but it's not that we need it back. but it's not that we need it back, it's that we need to admit that it should have never been taken away. And we really need to look deep at what our community has been going through with this, how that simple statement that was made during a really rough time period has affected our community so much that people are constantly posting about it, that people are constantly upset that it was taken away and that people are looking for a solution with that. But you don't just want to go back and reignite it. You have to have something behind it. It was put out there because we were having problems as a district and those problems are still there. So I urge this new board to go back and take a look at it, look at what we can bring forth with it, but to really at the heart of it, address the problems that are there. Talk with the community members that are out there. Talk with the people who are concerned about it. Bring folks together. But again, get to the root of the problem and how we're going to solve it. Thank you.
Up next is Jared Pillsbury.
Good evening, Board. So first a question. Is there anything more fun than giving a speech that you've neither rehearsed nor timed? Okay. Um, anyway, uh, first I'd like to welcome the new board. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you for serving. Thank you to your families as well. Uh, congratulations to President Blair, Vice President Greider, Treasurer Owens and Director Olkey especially. I'd like to welcome the new incoming superintendent. I know he's not quite on the job yet and we got our eye on Dr. Rappus for a little bit longer, but we look forward to welcoming him into the Francis Howell community. Uh, I paused before signing up tonight to give others an opportunity to speak as I know many are frustrated and feel unheard, perhaps even censored. That's not a good feeling. And I hope more voices will be represented at the podium and in communications with the new board. So here's a few things from me in no particular order. First, I'd like to, uh, pay a special thanks to Mrs. Jalls who coordinated a community forum, uh, not that long ago, hosted, uh, I think at the old building over by Hollenbeck, where we had, uh, a discussion amongst the community members and there was a consensus there, which is a rare thing these days, that improved communication is going to be key to a well-performing district. And I just want to emphasize that point tonight, that, that as we can communicate, we can do better as a district. We can have a better informed district and we can make better, more clear decisions. We can understand your decisions and where we fall into that mix. Um, I'd add something else based on the recent election results. We have an opportunity, based on the way that several districts went, to build a coalition with other districts to seek, speak plainly in opposition to school vouchers and school choice proposals, which have wrecked other state finances. Possibly even we could put in place a resolution reaffirming the district's commitment to protecting public education and speaking out against vouchers and, uh, school choice schemes. Um, I would welcome, I want to echo Harry Harris's sentiments. I would welcome an update from Director Ponder on the resolution against racism and discrimination. I know that it's been quite some time. I didn't do the math that Harry did and we need those math kids to do it. But, uh, I would welcome any updates there relative to the resolution and where we might be able to find a way forward. On that note, and just echoing what Harry had said, I think it's important that we could strengthen policies that accompany such a resolution and make sure that said policies are better enforced. I know other folks have plenty of examples of encountering incidents in the districts where nothing happened, nothing got done. That's not acceptable. Um, I'll say a quick word. I know that there was an auto sunset policy, uh, that was, uh, put in place during the last board's tenure. That needs to be undone. We shouldn't be playing whack-a-mole with all these policies coming in and out. We need boring board. I will echo the, uh, the comments from the librarian. I, I don't have enough time to get through all of this. I think a reinstatement of being able to electioneer on school grounds is important and I would ask the board do a good job at listening. I look forward to the board putting board in future board meetings.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Our next speaker is Mark Kymon.
Good evening, everybody. Stephen, I know from the look on your face you already know what I'm going to talk about. With, uh, the conversations going on in the community and other communities around the country, I'm here to let you guys know that as a district, we need to start planning on budgeting for cybersecurity services apart from the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Administration as their budget has been slashed drastically. Jen Easterly, who was the director, has resigned and people are leaving and getting fired in that position. So we, we need, as a district, we need a contingency because we've already suffered one incursion, which puts us at risk for more incursions, which can turn into full-blown breaches. Data lost, data stolen. Our children, their financial futures potentially ruined if we don't have something in place to safeguard the infrastructure should, God forbid, we lose the services from CISA, Moornet and other, uh, taxpayer-funded services. I, 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 I have to stop calling them free. I get yelled at by my cybersecurity advisor from CISA for saying it's free. No, they're tax-funded programs. So, um, I am working with the Technology Department already on a volunteer basis. Unfortunately, I can't volunteer for everything, but I will do what I can, so. Board of Directors, if you have any questions for me, Administration, I am readily at your disposal. Thank you.
And now we will have comments from FHGA.
Good evening. My name is Francine Hill and I am the president of FHGA. We would like to welcome our new board members and we look forward to working collaboratively with all the Board of Education and the new administration. Our district benefits when all of us work together. Many of us are concerned about the changes with the Department of Education, but we can work together to keep our district moving in the right direction. It was nice to learn that the district is moving teachers, excuse me, Francis Howell North to a location away from the toxic odor. We know the teachers have been struggling with being able to work. In fact, two of our teachers went to the doctor today and were told they can't return until Monday because, um, the doctor said that they're, um, it's due to unsafe work environment. So, um, our teachers' dedication and hard work make them wonderful educators that they are. And when things challenge their abilities to do this, it's hard on them. Hopefully, the new efforts to locate the source of this odor will result in a solution to the issue. FHGA is hopeful that the district will be able to finally bring back some form of the resolution that was removed. We will happily help with any team that will be willing to work on this. We also look forward to district committees starting up again soon. So let's move forward to a bright future. Thank you.
Thank you. And now somebody from FISA.
Thank you, President Blair. My name is Tracy Edelen and I've been an ASL interpreter with Francis Howell School District for 18 years. I serve as the Vice President of Interpreters and speaking on behalf of the members of FISA. We would like to congratulate Vice President Greider and Director Olkey on their victories in the, of the April election. We look forward to getting to work with you both and we would like, like we have with the previous board members, to make Francis Howell School District an amazing place for our students and staff. We would also like to congratulate President Blair and Treasurer Owens on their new board positions. The odor issues that have plagued Francis Howell North since the district took possession of the building are a major concern. Our staff and students have been suffering negative health effects during this school year. Staff members have had to take numerous sick days due to horrible headaches, migraines and other issues. Classes have needed to be moved throughout the building due to the horrific odor that the smell has, and the smell has also reached most every part of the building throughout this year. Recently, the Learning Commons was closed for multiple days. The district needs to be firm with SM Wilson. This problem needs to be resolved. Temporary fixes have not worked and are only harming those subjected to the issue. Building staff have been vigilant and done everything they can to assist on fact-finding. Office staff run around the building with emails and phone calls about smells going out. The district is spending a lot of time and money on manpower to fix a problem not created by this district. A permanent solution is required and not in the distant future, but now. District leadership needs to be open and honest with the staff of Francis Howell North and what is going on and what they are doing to fix it. They need to come into the building and talk with everyone face-to-face. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, like a motion to approve the consent agenda for April 17th, 2025 as presented.
Salute.
First from Jane, second from Mark. Discussion Board. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. For our first action item. Board, I have a motion to approve the purchases as presented. Motion by Jane, second by Mark. Need discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up, Board, I have a motion to approve exploration to let bids for the projects as presented. Jane is the first and Mark is the second. Need discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Board, I have a motion to approve Burn and Jones through the utilization of the inter-local purchasing system, TIPS Job Order Contract Number 23010401, Number 2301402, 23020101, 23020102. That's all for you math people. And 200602 to provide labor and materials to replace the rubberized track surface at Francis Howell High for a total cost of $501,000 as presented. Do you have a first? Mark is the first, second to Jane. Need discussion?
Sir, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Um, just a quick question. What's the lifespan on that kind of?
You know, tracks, uh, you typically get 25 on a rubberized track, 25 to 30 years. This track, as I noted in the recommendation, has been resprayed, uh, three times. And I believe the original install was, I believe, 1998 is what I noted on that, uh, particular recommendation.
And has the technology changed from the time that it was first installed till? Like the new, is the new stuff better, I guess?
Um, in some ways, yes. But for the most part, the standards pretty much stayed the same. There's different levels of, uh, track systems and I believe the one that, uh, we've recommended here is a 200. I think they go up to 300 and 400 systems, but those would be what you'd see like at the University of Oregon that has a really high-level, uh, track program. Uh, they put that, um, more expensive track system.
We reached a point where we've already sprayed it enough times and it can't spray anymore and so this is requiring a full fix, right?
Correct. So, uh, you, you could potentially, uh, but you lose, uh, continuity and performance in that track system. You end up creating more hazards for students and staff.
Any other questions, Board?
Is there like a warranty on the work? Where we would guarantee a certain amount of time that it would be?
Yeah, I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe this track system comes with a five-year warranty.
Is that about the normal warranty?
Yeah, um, yes. You can always buy more, uh, but for our purposes, I think we felt that five years, uh, everybody's always trying to upsell. Uh, but the basic warranty on a track system usually is about five years.
You can buy an extended warranty on a track?
Yes, you, yes, you can.
I should buy one for everything.
Any other questions?
Would you suggest that?
No, because, um, really, on any track system, what you end up having, just like, um, turf, you know, if your base, uh, as you see in part of that proposal, once we scrape off, uh, the rubberized track system, we're going to inspect the base and mill an overlay where the base is shifted and moved and that's always an ongoing thing unless you do post-tensioned concrete, uh, which you're starting to see across the country, where folks that are tearing out track systems are going back to post-tensioned concrete and that gets you about 30 years.
Like our new tennis courts?
Yeah, but you also pay significantly more. So to do a post-tensioned track, you're looking in the one to 1.5 million.
Any other questions? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next, we have a finance and operations report. I'd like to have a motion to approve the finance operations report as presented. Jane is first, Mark is second. Ms. Embry?
Good evening. Oh, just, thank you. Good evening. So, this is normal information that we provide each month and, uh, all of the information, including the general financial reports, are posted online for anyone to be able to view. And as you will see, we do not have an actual budget amendment recommended. We post this each time though, so that you can see, you have a handy reference point of what our current status is on our fund balance trajectory and, uh, expectation for June 30. So as noted on this slide, we are anticipating still a 30.23% based on the current information that's been approved. We know that that will change because we know that every expenditure budget will be expended and, uh, revenue budgets can come in high or low depending on the particular revenue type. That, that document also includes, uh, transfer information or your information. And so then, as we move forward with these next two, it gives you the summary for each month of the budget amendment for revenue and for expenditures. This slide shows you our operating fund trajectory and it, it remains unchanged as well. And I provide for you that FY '28, we would estimate a 14.6% fund balance, which is slightly below the board policy of achieving the 15% fund balance. But we know that that information will change as well too as, uh, new revenues and expenditure information is known. We had that new information from Governor Kehoe back in January that the state adequacy target would not be realized for us. However, I will tell you that there has been recent activity out of the Senate Budget Committee that they have added it into the budget again. Much more to come. There will be debates and discussions and we don't really know where that will land. When I present to you on the budget, you'll be reminded that the legislative session ends in the middle of May and we'll know more then. This is our reminder on the bond fund financial information that's posted for you and it's small print, but as you can see, we currently have, uh, an amount just over $4 million, $4,302,96 that has not been committed for any projects. that has not been committed for any projects. As projects continue to be finalized, that number will also adjust, and we'll be making recommendations for you in the future that would be for utilizing those funds. For our self-insurance fund, we're not recovering at this point, and I'll be sharing more about the health fund during the budget presentation. But as you can see, based on this information, when you compare our ending balance at the close of March for last fiscal year to the current fiscal year, we have dropped down by $3,500,000, and that includes the $4 million infusion that we've already made to the health fund. We know that our current trajectory on that increase was reported to you last month at 23.5%. We did receive some updated information just this week. It's dropped slightly, but still in the 20s. So we will continue to unpack that, and once we're able to get our employee insurance committee launched, then we'll have more conversations.
And that new information was effective through what exact date?
It would be through the March data.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe. I'll double-check that, but I believe that's... Okay, so, this is just a summary of some of the work that's taking place. So again, as you know, we had the 23.5. There wasn't a great deal of new information to share. We do have one particular claim that's very expensive against the plan, and it's getting worked through and discounted and all of that, and so there could be a major fluctuation. We're also running behind on receiving some of those rebates that we typically get, and they will significantly impact the number, too. So I'm still hopeful that we'll see that drop more, but that's where we are at this time. So as you know, you've approved the moving forward of the facility master plan, so that work is underway, and the demographer study work is underway, will provide us data to inform future conversations and recommendations and decisions. Director of Finance Julie Walsh and I are working fast and furiously on the budget development piece so that we can provide you with detailed information on that. And that debt defeesance will be coming your way for a vote in the March, or excuse me, May 15th meeting. So, scheduled for May, our budget review will take us to general and teacher funds. It'll be very high-level, just to get to your mind and understanding of what goes on in those funds, and we'll cover that in greater detail on the details coming up at the June meeting in terms of revenues and expenditure recommendations. So that concludes the finance and operations presentation. Are there any questions?
I have a question. I have my question. Mark, thank you.
Hi, so I have a question.
Yes.
In your speech, you mentioned that we have $4 million in funds. So hasn't any of that been put to improving the odors, the so-called hazardous odor at Francis Howell North?
Well, I will tell you that we have a number of contracts underway with our existing provider in terms of addressing that. The district is also pursuing other needs and doing our own investigations, and more of that will be provided in a presentation later in the meeting that will help you better understand that. But whatever the fund balance is, if we bring a contract to the board for approval that exceeds a certain threshold, then they would approve it during this meeting. And so at this point in time, the work that's been done has come in under that threshold, but a great deal of activity has taken place to attempt to solve that situation. Good question.
How long do you anticipate the study taking?
The facility master plan?
Sorry, the demographic study?
That's a great question, and I don't have an answer for you, but I'll get one.
Sorry, I guess.
No, it's okay. I need to get up to speed on that and check in, so we just launched that about two weeks ago, and I'll get an update for you.
The dental self-insurance fund?
Yes.
$17 million. What, can you just briefly explain what the major, what contributed to that mostly?
So, let me just go, oops, I went too far. Okay, so, interestingly enough, in Francis Howell, we do keep dental and medical separate, and so we're able to report on it separately. A lot of districts combine those together to where it's not so noticeable, but if you're referring to the change in the balance, it's very minimal, $17,441, it remains fairly constant, and it just isolates out the premiums for dental and then the usage, the expenditures. So which number is it that you are?
I was looking at the 17.
The 17,000?
Because for the dental fund, it seemed like it was, I know it's only 3%.
Yes, yes.
But it looked at it.
It remains very steady. It's easy to project and predict, and there typically aren't any big surprises with it as compared to the medical fund.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed, say no? Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to approve the technology equipment purchase presented and authorize the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC, Commercial Commerce Bank as lesser, for the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of certain technology equipment, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing all other actions related to the lease purchase financing contemplated by this resolution. Is there a first?
I'll...
Jane is first, Amy a second. There's no presentation?
There's no presentation. You'll recall that Scott Gallon provided an update regarding all things technology, and he's right here, ready to join me at the podium. This is our standard process that is utilized for financing our technology, and it's a standard process that districts throughout the state use. I will apologize to you for the motion. You can tell whenever you have many, many lines to read that we have definitely had legal eyes on all things, and so that's a comfort for you. But Scott and also Julie Walsh, our Director of Finance, worked collaboratively to bring this recommendation. Scott, of course, navigated all things technology and the challenges with the devices, and as you're aware, we were meeting some tariff implications that caused us to need to bring this forward to you very quickly. So if you have any questions, I'm sure Scott would be the one to answer those. The financing piece of it is a very simple process, and I've worked with Clayton Holdings or Commerce Bank in the past on these, and they are excellent, the work that they do to help us make sure that we meet all the requirements with that.
Just curious, Scott, okay, so, the vendor number three is the one you're recommending, and at the top you say it's R.211, but you want approval for the lowest bid, best bid proposal? And the lowest was $1,084, not?
The key word there is lowest best bid. We had actually submitted an RFP for a specific device, which was an Acer Chromebook, and the lowest bid was not an Acer Chromebook. And the Chromebook that it was for is a model that I've used in other districts, but in this case, it was not as good as the device that we saw. As you'll recall from my February presentation, we have to buy the device that's going to make sense for us five years from now, when that device will still be out there in the field. And so one of the things that we were looking to do was to get the touchscreen. The other thing that we were looking to do was to get a higher processing power. But this particular device has some additional features that were just not present in the other ones. So this is the lowest best bid recommendation.
I have just a question or clarification I could help, you could use your help with. So last month, I believe it was, when we went through the technology report and we listed out, we have a lot of Chromebooks, right?
That is correct, yes.
More than one-to-one as far as like the actual technology goes. Help me understand and help the community understand why we're moving to this, where we're putting this lease out on a whole new set of Chromebooks. Like, what's happening to the old ones? Are we one-to-one? I know you talked a lot about that, but just as a refresher for everybody.
For the audience, that'll be in the February board meeting, which of course is online if you'd like to go back and see my presentation on that. But in a nutshell, we are purchasing a larger quantity because, again, we are moving to a touchscreen. We are also moving to one that has eight gig instead of four gig in terms of processing power. So in order to have this asset at the best place that we need to have this asset, again, the touchscreen is going to be better suited for those that are more inclined to tactile interfaces. So in order to have that where it is best positioned, we're purchasing a larger quantity than we're retiring. And the intention behind that is to take what is now a five-year cycle and to purchase Chromebooks in four of those years instead of five. And we talked in the March board meeting about our capital plan, and part of that is the reason why we're doing this, because in that middle year, we purchased teacher devices, and we're trying to level out our capital plan. So basically, think of Chromebook years as years one, two, four, and five, and our teacher device year as being year three. So that's why it looks a little different.
So what happens with all of the old Chromebooks that we had? I know there were, PTOs have purchased a number of these, so it feels like it's disjointed a little bit maybe from what one school has versus the other school, and...
And it currently is. And this is our first phase in the move towards more continuity among the district. But as part of that first phase, the older Chromebooks that are out in present circulation are going to be retired and recycled.
I wanted to bring up, there was an emergency authorization for purchase.
That is correct.
And that is something that's within policy. The idea is if a big, like a chiller goes out, we don't have to assemble to authorize a purchase of the chiller. It can be purchased and then used to immediately improve the situation, right? So we have this in place, and it was utilized recently. Can you share, like, who noticed what was happening? Because I think everybody would like to hear just how much money was saved because of somebody's forethought.
I'll have to give you the exact amount later because I do not have that exact calculation. But after we collected our bids and prepared for the board meeting, after we prepared for it, we received a call from our vendor saying that those bids would no longer be valid, and we were kind of in a scramble. They did suggest at that time that we go ahead and see if we can get an authorization outside of the normal procedures, and speaking with the superintendent, we were able to do all that they asked us to do. I haven't shared it widely, but they did tell us that was not going to be enough. And so we fought, and we requested that they honor the agreement that was put before us because we've run through all the hoops. And as of right now, we are still, that price that has been quoted and that you have approved potentially is going to be honored for us. And that was definitely some savings.
It is upward of a half million dollars or just over because we were facing at that time 145% tariff, given that these devices were going to come from China with the $1.2 million purchase. And just for everybody to catch on to that, basically, our financial leadership of the district was paying close attention, and because of your faithfulness in that moment, you saved the district a considerable amount of money for this purchase. And I just, whenever that kind of stuff happens, I think it's helpful for us to highlight it and celebrate it. So for everybody here, just want to say thank you to everyone who was involved in that decision that saved the district a lot of money because you were thinking and watching very closely. So, thank you so much.
Good.
Any other comments? For the technology lease purchase and financing, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed, say no? Motion passes. Now for the 26-27 calendar approval, I'd like to have a motion to approve the 2026-2027 calendar as presented. We have Amy as first, Jane as second. There's no presentation? Any questions?
May I just share a few things of information for you? We just wanted to take a minute to thank the stakeholders who provided input after our March meeting and the survey. We received 91 responses, and a large majority supported the changes to ensure finals would be completed before winter break. There are no changes made to the calendar being presented to you tonight from our March meeting in regards to the 26-27 calendar.
Any questions, Board? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed, say no? Motion passes. And now for a motion to approve the 2025-2026 calendar revision as presented. Jane, first and second is Mark. Any questions, Board?
President Blair, just want to share with you that we presented a revised 25-26 calendar that matched 26-27 for your consideration. After much stakeholder input and thought, there is a little difference in the calendar that you see this evening. So spring break was returned to the original date that had been previously approved, and that keeps us in line with St. Charles County School Districts, and that really was because of our stakeholder input, and so I appreciate everyone taking some time to share that. We are still recommending that the start date for staff and students be moved, just so that we can ensure we have as many student contact days in that first semester to allow for winter, for finals to be completed before winter break, and we will work very closely with any of our teachers that that might cause some hardship. So happy to answer any questions.
I know that we all got an email stating that the two days were a problem for the start, at the start of school because they'd already made vacation plans. What can be done? I mean, you said you'd work with them, but what will happen?
Sure, we can offer some options like flex time, the day and a half that would be required of teachers on August 7th and 8th is work time. So whether that is coming in sooner, maybe that's coming in on the afternoons of the PD days that are scheduled in August, August 18th and September 19th, completing that work time, then maybe working longer hours that other week to adjust for that time. But we can absolutely work with teachers if they can't come in on that day and a half of August 7th and 8th, and offer some flexible time for them to come in and work in their classroom or getting...
I'd hate to have them, see them have to take vacation, extra vacation time or anything like that. So, okay, that's great.
I just had a question, too. I know we talked about this a little bit last month with the difference in the imbalance between semester one and semester two, and from a curriculum standpoint, the teachers. Is there any discussion that you were able to share so far about ideas for how to balance that from a curriculum standpoint, especially for those semester classes?
Yeah, the curriculum team's had some high-level conversations. They know that it's a need. We haven't had the conversations yet. We're waiting to see if the calendar is approved, and so we'll give the team the green light to start problem-solving those courses and what adjustments we need to make. So I don't have an answer for you today of what will happen, but we recognize that it needs to happen, and the team is ready to have the conversations once approved.
Okay, that's great. Do we, this is just a question that I just really don't know, so I'm just curious. Is there, with the finals, because I know like the finals thing really throws things off, is there a possibility, like, do we have to have finals at semester, at each semester, or is that something that you could do, like, end-of-year assessment versus, except for semester courses, you know, for any other courses where that wouldn't, that balance wouldn't throw things off so much?
Are you asking, instead of having semesters, instead of having finals at the end of each semester, if we could just have one cumulative final at the end of the...
Like one end of your semester, one, yeah, end of year assessment, is that a possibility?
We could do anything. We might need to adjust some policies. I'd have to go back and look at the exact language in the policy.
It actually was an idea that was recommended during our monthly meeting with the FHA reps, came from one of the high school teachers, and we all had had an aha moment that that's a great idea to explore. To Dr. Bumpin's point, just making sure we're in line with policy, though, so now that those decisions can be made, it's something we can look at in the future.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed, say no? Motion passes. I'd like to have a motion to approve the selection of the employee insurance committee members as presented.
Sumut.
Jane? Any questions to the Board?
Yeah, I was just curious about some of the community members that were chosen. How did this, just curious, how did, how did this get processed? Who picked the community members or why? I'm just curious. Was that you, Steven?
President, yes, actually. So, looking first at the employee insurance committee, we followed the rules of the bylaws, and the amount of staff who was interested matched perfectly with the amount of staff that we needed. Same thing with retiree, FHA, FISA, Teamsters. With the community, there were four people who had requested, or offered their time and services to be part of this committee. We had two spots, so those two members were drawn out randomly, and it was drawn in an unofficial ceremony with Jane and who else? a unofficial ceremony with Jane and, who else was present?
Michelle.
Jane and Michelle, and so we were scrap, Andrew Guthrie and Cliff Steve to be part of that. Because this is only through the end of June, the thought is that this would be a good start, but it might be helpful to go through the bylaws a little more, more, I guess, inspection in detail as we prepare for the next year.
Well, President Boyer, that sounds very reasonable. I'm glad to hear that, because one of the people that voluntarily actually has policy, went to the policy committee, actually has policy experience. So I thought, you know, I was just hoping that maybe that person, but you're right, it's only until the end of June. So hopefully, you know who you are, please apply again, because we could use that expertise.
I just want to affirm, that's absolutely true. And so basically, we have four people who all have their own credentials, and how do you know without taking the time to interview them?
Right.
And ask them questions, realizing that that could also be a good part of the process. In this case, there were four amazing people, and...
That was a reasonable way to do it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Any other comments regarding the employee insurance committee list? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Now, motion to approve the selection of the policy committee with the members presented.
Select.
Sorry. So Jane with first, second with Mark. Any questions, board? I'd like to share, the update is that in the same way, the amount of people that the bylaws required for staff, the numbers were almost a perfect match in terms of how many people offered their services and how many people in slots were available. FHA, FISA, Teamsters, there were 11 members of the community who had offered their time to be part of this. We also drew those names randomly, as well with Jane and Michelle as well. So in the same way, there were 11 people who may have all been fantastic, it's with this position, but without doing fuller interviews, felt like this was the best way of doing it in the shortness of time.
When is a Teamster's going to be filled, do you know?
We reached out to them to get a name, we're just waiting to hear that. We had it for one committee and not for the other. They're not listed, given that the association gets to appoint their person, it wasn't necessary for the board to have that name to approve it tonight. Any other questions about the policy committee? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. And now, item J, motion to waive the sunshine fee as presented. Jane and Amy, second. Any discussion?
How many sunshine requests do we get in a regular month? Is there a growing average?
Anywhere from one to 15, but the amount of detail of a sunshine request is what's significant. Some are real quick to answer, others are hours of, and then that's not including the subpoenas that the district receives, so it's all hands-on deck most likely.
Which is kind of my concern. We've kind of opened up the door. So how do we now all of a sudden start selecting who gets a waiver and who doesn't? It's going to, in my opinion, it's going to start looking like we're playing favorites for granting one and not 15. So in my opinion, we either have a sunshine fee waiver, or we don't. So...
I think you have to sometimes give some allowances for certain things, but can you tell me a little bit more about this waiver? What is the situation? Why would this person sunshine this information? Does anybody know? There's always a motivation behind it, so... Anybody know?
I can speak a little bit to that. So this is a request being made by a parent for emails that mention or pertain to the parent, their spouse, or the student. And the invoice is charging for review of over 4,000 emails that were captured in this parent's request of dates and request of what they want to hold. Have you gone back and asked if that is the scope of what they really want? Because, you know, sometimes they're awarded these waiver, or these requests are awarded that they want, you know, they only want something this big, but the way it comes across is they want something this big. There's been multiple communications back and forth, and this is what they have requested. And we have to review every email. Some email could be related as part of their educational record, some could be other students that have been captured in that email. And so that entire portfolio needs to be reviewed each individual, excuse me, each individual email to ensure that it's a potentially responsive record, that items have to be redacted, and that's one person doing that manually. So 4,000 emails is a significant amount.
Any other comments? If you want to be clear, this is a motion, all those in favor of waiving the sunshine fee, correct? This is all those in favor of waiving the sunshine fee. Say aye. Any opposed, say no.
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 Motion fails. Item K, sunshine fee waiver request, motion to waive the sunshine fee as presented. First?
Select.
Mark, and second is Jane.
Again, is there a backstory to why this was...
This sunshine request is for academic data for a reading program intervention in progress monitoring that's done across the district. So this, what they're asking for is individual outcomes, not pertaining to their particular student, but all students. And so it has to be reviewed, it has to be redacted for PII.
So another 4,000 emails?
I don't know what the data amount is, but...
This one is less related specifically to emails, but also to the reports that are being requested related to the student achievement data. And the law allows us that we charge the hourly rate of the lowest per hour person in the district that can do that search and provide the information. In this situation, it was ultimately our director of assessment who understands those assessments, how the data is reported in the system, has the expertise to pull the specific reports, and then to make sure that individually identifying student information is not in those reports. And so that's why this one has the cost that it does. We do, just for the public's knowledge, when we provide this invoice, it's an estimate of hours. If we were to do the work and it took half the hours, then we would reimburse the difference. I would say that historically, we underestimate the hours that it takes to do a lot of this work, though. I, just to give clarity, all those in favor of waiving the sunshine fee, say aye. Any opposed, say no.
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 Motion fails. Next item is curriculum. We have a curriculum first reading that will be brought back at the May 15th meeting for a second reading and a vote. Is there any discussions on the list, curriculum listed?
I have a quick question. This is on, will this curriculum be what we just adopted, the new HMH curriculum?
This is the curriculum we would use with the new resource, correct? So you approved the resource, this is the curriculum, correct?
Okay, and this will be used in conjunction with STAR as an assessment tool? All right.
Anything else? All right. Moving along, we have FHN building update, and I believe SM Wilson is here, so invite SM Wilson to come to the podium.
Board members, as you are aware, we have continued to have an ongoing odor issue at Francis Howell North since an update was provided to you during the December business meeting. We share the concern that you've heard tonight, and I know that you've heard via email and other communication, that our teachers and our staff have that the odor continues and that it's negatively impacting anyone at the building. There has been a lot of work and investigation over the last few months, yet unfortunately, it has not resolved the issue. We do want to be transparent about the work that's taking place, the work that is planned moving forward, and what's happening ultimately to try and identify a resolution. So we have Mr. Matt Frank with us tonight, project director from SM Wilson, as well as our executive director of facilities and operations, Mr. Salum Stutzer, to talk through the work that has taken place since you last had an update and the work that's planned as next steps.
Hi, good evening. It's nice to see everyone again. We saw you in December, and it's a pleasure to meet the new board members as well. I do wish it was a more sunny report today, but we are going to talk about some difficult things. You know, I, we, I'd like to start by saying that we share your frustration with the odor problem. You know, the building was constructed, we put our heart and souls into it, along with hundreds of workers onsite and a lot of other people. And truly, the last thing that we want is a nagging problem, is causing disruption. So tonight, my plan is to give you an update on the work that's taking place behind the scenes and in the open, answering any questions that you may have, and also provide an update on what we're doing and what the future plans are to resolve this as soon as possible for everyone. At any point, please stop me if you have a question that comes up. So the first item, just starting in December, I was here and gave an update, and we were really cautiously hopeful that the problem was solved in December. We found a major clog in an exterior sewer main. It was hydro flush, the clog was cleared, the smell dissipated, and we were, you know, feeling okay that that was the problem. It was something that was identified, fixed. And it did seem to alleviate the problem for some time. Right after we cleared that clog, we went ahead and camered all the exterior sewer mains, just to see if there were any issues, make sure that there wasn't an issue in that sewer main that may cause a future clog. All that camera work showed that everything was draining properly, slow correctly, all those things. So Christmas break happened, students came back after Christmas break, and the odor did start to creep its way back in in December, and it persists to today. In February, we did some investigations, and I would like to point out, too, that during this time, we have a full-time superintendent onsite. Anytime that care, Mr. Fletcher, report a smell, we know about it. Our superintendent comes into the building, investigates the area, collects data, tries to figure out a source, et cetera. So we are onsite, and we're there usually within a matter of minutes if a smell's reported to try to identify the source. In February, though, we did find, through investigation, we found a floor drain in the mechanical room that was missing a trap. So we repaired that, installed the trap. Certainly, a contributor, it wasn't a main solution, but it was a minor issue that we identified and repaired. In March, we did camera the underground sewer mains within the building. So in December, we camered all the exterior sewer mains. In March, we camered the interior sewer mains. Now, the exterior is an eight-inch line, the interior typically four-inch, they're a lot smaller, there's a lot more of them, so less likely for it to cause a systemic problem. But through the effort of being thorough, we camered those lines. The results all came back that they were altering improperly, not clogged, no identifiable issues. And also, in March, we hired a third-party engineering group, case engineering was hired to help solve the problem. They're a different engineer than designed the building, which is good, and that's why we hired them. They're doing a peer review of the design drawings to make sure, for one, there aren't any design issues with the building. Secondly, they're also helping to assist in identifying testing that can be done, they're monitoring testing, and they're being a thought partner as we work through to solve this problem. In April, the engineering group, the third-party case engineering, has been doing their peer review design. Now, the drawings, there are 600 pages of drawings, it takes a long time, it's a big building, and they're being thorough. So they are doing that work, and then tomorrow, they're coming onsite, the district's closed, so it's a perfect time to get in, really open up the ceilings and do a lot of investigation. They're sending four engineers onsite. We also have, the commissioning engineer will be there, we've got four plumbers, several of our own general superintendents, and others will be onsite for just the most thorough investigation that we could come up with, basically. Things that we've done to date, some of these you know, some of these you may not. So we did, you know, clear the clog in the west sewer main. We inspected all the sewer lines, interior, exterior of the building, they're all flowing, there don't appear to be any issues. We smoke tested the vent system. On three occasions, we smoke tested the system, and what that means, for those of you that are unfamiliar, you have your underground sewer mains where the water flows out of, those need to be vented, kind of like a milk jug, if you try to pour milk jug out, it picklers, but if you poke a hole in the back, it pours out freely. Plumbing system needs vents, it's kind of like the hole in the back of the milk jug. So what we did is we applied smoke to those vent systems to ensure that there's no breaks inside the building that could be causing a smell issue. There was no smoke, they appeared to be all intact. And during construction, the vent system was also water-tested by Heber Burger, who installed them, which means you have to fill the vent system with water, it sits for 24 hours, the city of St. Peters comes out, monitors that the water level didn't drop, and then it passes inspection to make sure that there's no breaks in the system. So that was all done. We did do the floor drain repair in the mechanical room. We did find a small chip out of a plumbing vent in the nurse station. It was reported a smell, and it was in a piece of casework, it had been chipped, so we repaired that. And then, in the auditorium restroom above the ceiling, there was a section of vent piping open, we were able to find that and fix that as well. Last year, we cleaned out the grease interceptor. That also seemed to help the problem for a matter of days, and then came back, we removed 1,000 gallons from the grease interceptor. The plumbing vents on the roof were, have been, and maybe continue to be a possible source. The code requires that when you sub-vent out of the roof, it has to be a certain distance away from an outside air intake on a air handler that's on the roof. So we measured all those vents, ran it by the engineer, they confirmed that they are all code compliant, no issues there. Sometimes what can happen is the smell comes out of the plumbing vent and can get sucked into the rooftop unit air handler. We want to make sure that they were per code, and they were. We've also done a visual inspection of the plumbing systems, both our staff and the plumber has been out, literally putting their own eyes on the plumbing system, making sure things are routed correctly and no breaks that are visible. So the reason, you might ask, and I'm sure a lot of you have thought, why is it taking so long? You know, what's, what's holding up here? It's difficult. You know, one of the problems is the building's 400,000 square feet, there's 23 air handler systems on the rooftop unit, they're complex systems as well. There's literally miles of plumbing piping, and that's not exaggeration. I mean, it's a lot of plumbing in the building. The smell is typically on the west side of the building, there really hasn't been experience on the east side, mainly in the center to the west side of the building is, tends to be where it presents itself. The other thing that makes it difficult is we can't reproduce it. There's nothing that anyone can do to create the odor. If you, in your home, for example, if you had an open sewer pipe, you'd smell it, and the closer you got, it would get stronger, and you'd be able to fix it. This is difficult, because the smell appears sometimes for a matter of minutes and disappears, and may not appear for days or a week, and then appears in a different area of the building. Oftentimes, I've personally been onsite where a smell was reported, and from the time the report happened, and I walked from the main office to the location of the smell, it was gone that quickly. So it makes it...
Mr. Boyer, can I interrupt one minute? So to clarify, because I think this is important for our staff, nobody is saying that the smell doesn't exist or that it's not there. We, most of us that have visited the building during these times have smelled it, it's just the idea that it's a smell in, you know, in the air system, so it is intermittent, it comes and it goes. So I just want to be clear, I think some people felt like we're saying they're lying, we're making it up, and that's never been the case. We have knowledge that there absolutely is an odor that has existed.
That's absolutely true, thanks for clarifying that. Yeah, we do not deny that there's an issue that needs to be resolved at all, and we're just trying to share the difficulty in solving it. We also have outside influences, which you think, okay, the odor's inside the building, was the exterior of the building have anything to do with it? Well, we have these 23 air handlers on the roof, they have outside air dampers, so part of that is efficiency, when it's... of that is efficiency, when it's cool out, the system doesn't have to fire up your chillers, they use a ton of energy, and it can draw the air in from the outdoor and cool the interior of the building. And that's something you want, you want that. But what can happen is it draws in, if there's some, a smell outside, it can draw it in through the air handler. We do have a video that illustrates what can happen, I guess, just to help. Can I play?
Can we play?
Oh, yeah, thanks. So this is a case where intentionally creating smoke, or smoking the vent system, and what you see on the air handler system is an exterior louver. Those louvers, some of them dryer in, some really bear out, but you can see how the wind blows. Now, imagine the smoke is smell, and as the wind shifts, it can blow into the rooftop air handler system, and as the wind moves the other way, it can move away from it. If odor looked like smoke, it'd be easier to find, but it's clear, you can't see it. And when you're outdoor and the wind's blowing, it's hard to smell it, truthfully, however, it can find its way into an air handler system. So now we have 23 of those, there's, I don't know how many vents on the roof, but there's a number. So just to help understand the complexity and maybe share why it's taken a little bit to get it resolved. Go ahead, move on.
To the next slide.
Ah, yeah. Okay, so, next steps. So we've talked about what we've done, here's what we're doing as well. We have Case Engineering, they're reviewing the design drawings, they're through it, but there is a lot to absorb. We have vent models, as well drawings, actual drawings, photographs, submittals, reports, all that stuff, they're digging through it. Check the design of the building. Additional smoke testing, so we are smoke testing, again, tomorrow. The reason that we're doing that is we want Case Engineering to observe it. We smoke tested it. Last time, we had several people there, there was nothing shown. Tomorrow, we're turning off the rooftop units, Case Engineering's going to be on site, they're going to observe the test, also direct any areas that they feel like may need to be tested that we may have not thought of. So it's just as thorough as you can be. Vent pressure monitoring, so we talked a little bit about the plumbing vents on the roof. Use the milk jug illustration. When the water's coming out of the milk jug, it's pulling air into the milk jug, and that's the way a vent should work on the roof, is when you flush a toilet or run a sink, the water should flow down the drain, and it should draw air in through the roof. And that's typically how they should work. The vent may be neutral, maybe there's not air coming in or out, but when you run water, it should go in. We do believe that some of the vents on the roof are pushing air out of them, which is smelly air because it's a sewer system. So that's one of the things that we're looking into, is why would that be? So we're going to test the vents on the roof with a manometer, and what a manometer does is it measures pressure differential. So you put one side of it in the vent, the other side in the atmosphere, and if it's trying to draw air in, that tells you it's functioning correctly. If it's trying to push air out, that tells you that there's potentially a problem there. So that's going to give us some good data to try to help find a solution. We're also going to target drain checks and trap seals. Basically, floor drains, you know, we have floor drains in our house, if it dries up, you can get some smell out of it. We're going to check those, make sure that they have guards on them, that they're full of water, that they have traps. We have done that to date. We're going to make sure that it's very thorough. It's kind of one of those things, you check the big things, and when they don't work, then you go back to a finer, granular level of detail, and that's somewhat what we're doing with these drain checks and trap seal. We also have onsite third-party inspection of the plumbing and HVC system, so Case Engineering's going to be there, the installing plumber is going to be there, and a third-party plumber is going to be there as well to visually verify the plumbing system, along with the smoke tests, et cetera. And then we have our commissioning agent who is investigating the HVC systems, just to help us, again, with the thought process and the testing to see if they're functioning correctly, are they drawing in more than they should, is there a negative condition, something like that that could be causing it. And then we are also doing additional camera inspections. We've camered the sewer lines, we're also done some cammering on the vent lines, and we're going to camera those more thoroughly to see if there's an issue. Now, we've already smoke and water tested them, but we want to make sure that we're not having restrictions in the vent piping or other minor things that maybe could be causing an issue. Lastly, I just want to reassure everyone that we are committed, we're not giving up on this, and in fact, we're amping up our resources to get this resolved. We're fully vested to work hard till the end. We completely understand the nuisance of what you're experiencing as a district, and we truly don't want that, we want to resolve it. It's been a complicated issue, but we are not giving up. Also, moving forward, I think sometimes it's easy to not understand what we're doing because, you know, we're just working, you're busy, we're busy, things like that. So we're going to start providing weekly updates on what we're doing. That way, everybody understands, here's what we did that week, and here's what we found or didn't find, and here's what that is, helping us learn to take as the next step to help resolve this issue. So that's my update for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm sure you may have some.
Any questions, Board?
Yeah, I have a couple. When you do these weekly updates, how are you going to communicate those, and to whom are you going to communicate them?
Well, my plan would be to send them to Salum, and then allow Salum to distribute them to
It'll be our normal communication, that we communicate with you in terms of getting that to the superintendent, and the superintendent will provide those updates.
An update we provide both to the Board of Education as well as to the Frank cell north staff, so that they're aware as well.
I also might suggest that you go back, because we've all gotten emails, and you can shake your head. We've all gotten emails, and there seems to be a lack of communication on the part of the staff that's suffering from the odors, and, you know, it's, I know, we're doing everything you can, but it's not fair to the teachers, and furthermore, they have reported to us that there's a mood of condescension, that for whatever reason, they're made to feel that, not everybody, but some of the emails that I've gotten, they're made to feel that they're out of their minds, the smell isn't really there, you know, things like that. So my advice is maybe a little bit of a PR campaign, like you said, you're going to update, which I was going to recommend, but the other thing is to warn your staff about being very, very sensitive with the teachers, because I can imagine that it's not much fun to work in under those circumstances, and please make sure all of your, you know, whoever steps foot in that school does that. And thank you, Salum, for offering to, you know, distribute the information, but I just wonder, is this a job for Gen. Jules? You might help him write or something, you know, so just make sure.
I'm wondering if the families need to get a report every week, they have students at that school.
Probably a good idea, yeah.
So they know you're doing something. I'm wondering, have you, I don't know if this is possible or if it's kosher, I mean, would you bring in the EPA or OSHA or anything like that?
It's certainly something that could be considered, I suppose. I think that would be a bigger discussion, potentially, but
I think it's gone on long enough that there needs, we have to have some other things to resort to. What I'm concerned about is, I've worked, you know, on Smoke Free Missouri before, you know, cigarette smoking, and when we say that it's just in one part of the building, then I recall, you know, if there's cigarette smoke in any part of a building, it's everywhere. So I'm thinking, people are probably being exposed to this, they're not aware of it because it could be milder in other parts of the building. And what is the cumulative effect on this? I'm very worried that it's going to cause harm to people for maybe their lifetimes. And I think we have to get this done now. I'm worried about summer school. I don't think we should have summer school in a building that's not safe. I think we need another contingency plan for summer school, if this isn't fixed by summer school. And then how do we go into school next year if it's still not fixed? Continually exposing people to this, it's not, it's not moral. I know it's not healthy, but it's also not moral. And I've taught in buildings that were not healthy, and we had a lot, six teachers that didn't have very long lives because their building wasn't safe. So this is not just, oh, it's annoying, we don't know what the cumulative effect is on people that are in this day after day, and we have to be thinking that way, not that, oh, it's just an annoying smell, because we don't know what it's doing to people.
I appreciate those thoughts.
Actually, I can. So one thing going forward would be for the May meeting, if you can bring a contingency plan for summer school, if that's a possibility. The other thing is, you identified that tomorrow will be the most thorough investigation. So basically, you're throwing all your resources at it. Anything that, you have an idea that might work, you're using that tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And so I would say, if that doesn't produce the information that you need, that might be a sign of having to have somebody else involved in the process afterwards, because if you're throwing everything you can think of, and that still doesn't solve the issue, we may need to go a different direction, have some people who are new investigating this. And so for, so I'm going to interrupt this, the idea, if this doesn't work out tomorrow, and they've exhausted all their ideas, is it possible for you to also come up with other ideas for the next board meeting for us to discuss on how to handle this?
I think that's too, that's a whole month.
I think we need information a lot sooner, because our teachers would be going back into that building on Tuesday, or Monday. So we want to be aware.
Do we know what gas is happening in there? Is that methane that's flammable and toxic?
Can you speak to the tests that were previously done around the air quality?
Yeah, so typically sewer gas is hydrogen sulfide is the gas that would be present in sewer gas. I can't, not being a medical person or a chemical engineer, I can't speak to hydrogen sulfide specifically, other than that is typically what's present in sewer gas. Now, we, when there's been smells reported, there's a thing called the four-gas monitor, and that tests hydrogen sulfide amongst other gases. Those monitors have been, have been used when smells are reported, and they have not picked up any hydrogen sulfide. So to date, it's been tested with handheld monitors to check those areas.
There was also, and Mr. Stutzer can speak to, there's also, and these were done previously, so we've talked about initiating them more, but even beyond the handheld, there was an air collection study, air test that was on 1.2.
Yes, there was a third-party that came in and utilized their testing equipment. They were around that day for approximately six hours or so because of the intermittency. We were trying to, when there was an event, we were trying to capture the air quality in those spaces, and they were successful in capturing several samples, they took those back to the lab, they tested them, and they were negative, and would be happy to provide those reports to the Board should the Board request those.
Is there an option to put monitors in there, given that it's intermittent, to be able to just monitor and track, to say like, hey, this set off this many times in this many locations, just to be able to get a good gauge of what's happening when? Is that an option?
Yeah, we'll certainly take that note.
Just given the intermittent way that it's happening, you know, it's hard to catch it while it's there, but that way, at least if there's a way to track that, monitor it.
Yeah, like monitor consistently?
Yeah, just on an ongoing stage.
Certainly understand, we will explore that.
Well, you mentioned hiring third-party consultants, right, to look at those. I'm sure they have gas sensors themselves that they use, if they could leave those, and there's a way to electronically monitor them, so you could record it, I think that would be helpful, so.
There are systems like that that exist.
I think all of us just feel like at some point, there needs to be some accountability for the health of our students and staff in the building. This has been, I know you guys had said, I believe, November initially, but I believe their email's back to July and August when the building was first opened, so. Yeah, it's a big issue.
Dr. Rappis, I was wondering if you have a number of how many teachers and students have become ill this year from this?
We are aware of three staff members who have visited the doctor related to it, and then one student prior to this week, and then one student this week. Now, when I say that, there may be more, those are the ones that we know officially that reported to us and went through the workers' comp process, but we acknowledge that there could be others that we're just not aware of.
Well, maybe we could, you know, send out to the staff, how many of you have felt ill this year, something for me, something like this gas smell.
Be happy to capture that information for you.
Just, you know, I'm worried about it.
Are there log files with the reports? How frequently, is there a log file that's?
The building and the staff in the building have access to a Google sheet where they're capturing, I think every day, whenever it's reported, what area it's reported, and that exists.
Has there been analysis of this for any patterns?
I think that's what Mr. Frank was trying to explain, is that it's consistently inconsistent. You know, it is in different parts of the building, it was in that, even in the past two weeks, the 1,400 hallway at one point, then in the learning commons area, then it's more in the cafeteria space, and then it's back in the hallway. And so I don't know that they've found any patterns yet that exist that are consistent that allow them, you know, to help along with the investigation. Will the smoke test be done in a different area than it was before?
We're going to focus on the west side of the building. We did, it's going to be mostly in a similar area. The east side of the building has much less plumbing, fewer air handler units, fewer vent stacks. We can, so we can look at the drawings and see which rooftop units and which plumbing systems are interconnected, and we're testing those systems that could be a problem. So some of the systems we've tested previously, we are testing a few new systems as well tomorrow.
All right. I would just add this final closing thing, I guess, but if you guys can't figure it out, I would assume that we've got county, state, federal, you know, Kara, you mentioned the EPA, like whoever we've got to bring in who does know how to figure it out, because that's obviously a weird issue, right? Like, it's not a normal thing that you guys have encountered, so it's understandable, but we still have health concerns. So let's pull in whoever else we need to pull in to get it resolved.
Yeah, I understand.
Our student has a question.
Yeah, I have a question. So earlier, you mentioned that you contacted a third-party company called Case Engineering.
That's right.
So how hasn't this initiative taken earlier when there were reports of this odor happening?
Well, initially, we were working with a design engineer, McClure Engineering, who designed the building, and that would be the standard approach to, if you are having a problem with a newly constructed building, you would approach the engineer that designed the building and work with them. And we had been doing that, and eventually, through that process, led to the value of hiring another engineer beyond them to help that. Great question.
So how long have you been working with Case Engineering?
They, since March, we hired them.
And have you, like, found any benefits or any more clues to where this odor could be coming from while working with that company?
A few clues, and, you know, a bit of it is, as I mentioned before, it's a really large building, and there's a lot of data to go through. They are very motivated and energetic to help solve this issue, which is great. It's kind of like, you know, in school, if you have a, your final task for the year, you can't really learn it in three weeks, it kind of takes you that whole semester. Now, I'm not saying this is going to take the whole semester, but just for comparison, there's a lot of data to absorb, and they are in the process of absorbing that. They have mentioned a few things that they think could be an identifiable issue, but they're not prepared to fully report on it until they complete their review of the drawings.
Matt, you mentioned earlier that you found a trap that did not, or you found a drain that did not have a trap?
We did, yeah.
It's pretty easy to figure out which drains had traps, I'm sure, for you guys, to see if there's water or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, have you guys checked all the floor drains, made sure all the traps are there?
We are doing that tomorrow, as we're doing an audit on all of them. Now, we have, we have gone through and checked for traps, checked to make sure that there's a trap guard that goes in them to help the water from drying out, make sure those are in Make sure those are in there. There are a number of them, and it appears that we missed one. So that is causing the initiative to go back through and check all of them again.
And I'm certain that you did some sort of, before even beginning construction, there's some sort of vast topography surveys and land surveys and things like that. Was there anything found below the construction site that was, that might contribute to this? Some sort of other structure that might have been there? Anything that, I mean, we all have, you know, radon monitors in our homes and things like that that come up through the concrete, can't smell it. But, you know, anything that was found in the topography surveys or anything like that?
It's a great question. It was actually one of the first questions that Case Engineering asked us as well. Now, on this building, we did not design the building. We constructed what was designed by others. But there was a soils engineer that did a soils survey on the site. They drilled, they drill holes 30 feet deep and take cores of the soil to see what's in there. There was no mention of there being any concerns of fill. And, you know, you think of a building being constructed on landfill or something that can create methane gas and literally seep up through the floor of the building. They would have an underground venting system. There was no concerns or mention of that in the soils report.
Maybe go back and just look at that again, just to see if maybe something was missed. I would hate to, you know, I look back to Occam's razor, like, maybe that's the, the one thing that we just are trusting that we may be able to verify again.
Right.
I did look up whether or not hydrogen sulfide is flammable, and it absolutely is highly flammable. So I think maybe identifying exactly what that gas is may be able to pinpoint, you know, it may be able to eliminate a lot of other places and surfaces and other things as to where that gas might be originating from, much like a virus. You figure out, you know, what it is, and then you can identify the origin and then a solution. So I would, I would suggest that for sure. Yeah, I mean, I think you guys are on the right track. I think that the community and the board and the administration are just getting frustrated because there's, it's just so erratic that we, we can't figure it out. And one of the questions that, another question that I had was to just reiterate, I would like to know exactly how many, exactly how many students, how many teachers have fallen ill to this or had any sort of medical issues whatsoever, missed work, et cetera. And symptoms even, that, you know, a lot of these kids, like our, like our current board member, would probably just power through it. You know, he loves school, and he's just going to go. So even kids like that, I want to know, and, and get this done. I, I know that you, this is very frustrating for you, everybody here. And we appreciate you guys doing your due diligence, but let's, let's get this done. So maybe, like I said, going back and, and looking at things that you may have just trusted the, the information on, and just verifying that information, like the topography surveys and the core samples and things like that, might be a way to go.
Yeah, all very good thoughts. And we are extremely frustrated, but our frustration is our concern. Yours is, we are not only back on bringing anyone on board that can be of value. We're reaching out to peers, other people. And it's, we've had a lot of smart people working on it. It is just a unusual, complicated problem itself, so.
Are there any tests that you haven't done yet that you think should be done?
Nothing comes to mind at the moment. Now, what I would say is that we're not holding back. If there's a test that can be of value, we are engaging in it. You know, tomorrow was mentioned that you're throwing everything you got at it, and that is correct. I think, you know, some of that is going to be tomorrow, we, we give it, we give the college effort, everything we have, and then we take that data, and then we review it and make a plan for the data that we've collected. Now, some of it can be, no result is data, right? So you do the smoke test, and there's no smoke, again, okay, we rule that out this time. And we're able to shift focus on where to place our efforts after tomorrow. So tomorrow is a big data collection effort. And then from there, reprocess that data and figure out the next step.
I am concerned about the teachers who are getting doctors' notes, basically saying that they're having the effects of these. Are they, they're getting workman's comp, is that right, if they're not able to come to school? Okay. And they're not, are they using their sick days up, or is there?
They're all gone, they're all gone.
Director Olkey, state statute is that the first three days related to a workman's comp filing claim is that you do use personal sick vacation or doc days that you have. And then when you reach 14 days, that those can be given back to you. And so there is short-term, short-term reimbursement that happens within there as well. Be happy to provide more detail to you.
I just want to make sure we're booking out for our people.
So you're saying they will get the money?
I'm not necessarily, I'm not necessarily.
You're not saying that?
Again, not until they've been out 14 days where they have to.
They have to miss 14 days?
I don't want to give incorrect information, but after three, is it 60% of wages?
Could you say it a few times so I get it?
Yes, so Treasure Owens, the, the state statute requires you to use the three, the first three days of your person, your personal sick leave. And then the workman's comp case kicks in, and there is a percentage of their salary that is provided to them while they're out in their workman's comp case. It's not their full salary, but the salary is, is figured using all seven days of the week instead of just five. So it typically comes to about 65 or 70% of the salary while you're at, on workman's comp. And then after 14 days, if you're out for that same situation, that longevity, then the three days can be reimbursed to you that you originally took in that, what's called the waiting period by the workman's comp state statute.
Would SM Wilson presumably be accountable for reimbursing any of that? It doesn't feel like those things should fall on the district. Is that something that we can look into as far as accountability goes whenever we figure out what's going on? It's not anyway.
That's not the answer right now, that's beyond our scope. Because, again, part of this is tied to state statute when it comes to this. So we'd be happy to engage, get more information, or with our insurer, legal, anybody else in that situation. If, again, if somebody was found to be at fault, which was leading to it, which is a little bit different of a question, I believe. So if tomorrow does not produce an answer, an actionable answer?
Sure.
Is it fair for us to assume that means you're out of guesses? You're out of tricks to be able to find out the answer?
I wouldn't view it that way.
So how do you make tomorrow be more thorough, then? So that it truly is the most thorough investigation, as you said?
Well, I feel that the investigation tomorrow is designed to be extremely thorough. I mean, we are smoke testing, cambering, we have multiple engineers, plumbers, you know, everybody out there taking a look. You know, I think the intention of tomorrow is to collect the data. And then we'll use that data with our third-party engineer to, if we don't find an actionable step, then we take a look at that, we regroup as the engineers and us, and we talk about, okay, here's what we know now, because tomorrow's going to confirm a lot of things. One way or another, it's going to confirm certain things. And then we take those confirmations, and then we make that plan for the next, next action. I can't say what that action will be until we collect the data tomorrow, unfortunately.
One more question.
So, and then, just so that I understand what I heard in your presentation. What I understand is tomorrow's data collection. And it's going to take time to analyze what that data, so expecting actionable steps by Tuesday is probably unrealistic. Because, and let me finish. So then the other side of it is you've hired a plumbing contractor, or an engineer to review the plumbing drawings. And those plumbing drawings for a construction project that big, you said, was 600 pages?
Not the plumbing drawings, the total construction documents.
600 drawings, so the plumbing drawings are probably 40, 50, something like that. So they're going to review that. So you have another, then, engineering firm who's doing their own independent analysis to come in and see what the, and they could possibly include the sniffers and do an electronic data collection of any sort of smells that they may have in the building. So it just, there's a lot of data that they need to collect yet. And I get it, it's, we're in April, and they started this, and the first email I sent, they smell in July. So you guys got heart and heavy on it in November. So it's, I just, I think we need to be realistic, too, in what our expectations are. Is there's a lot of data that they need to put together and analyze. So I think Tuesday would be unreal, next Tuesday would be unrealistic. But because they're talking weekly communications with us.
So what is realistic?
Well, as far as tomorrow, and I don't want to mislead you that we're only trying to collect data tomorrow. The, the goal would be to find an actionable step. I mean, that's, that's what we hope tomorrow, is to get out there with everybody, and we've, there's the problem, and we fix it. If that doesn't happen, then we're analyzing all the data to make the plan for the next step. But the goal tomorrow is to find the problem. That's what we're hoping to achieve. We can't predict if we will, but that's the effort that's out there, is to find the problem so we have an actionable step. If not, the second phase of that would be then talking as a team with what we now know and making that next plan of action.
Another question over here.
Yeah, so do we have any districts or board supervisors that are going to be there for the investigation tomorrow?
I plan on being there tomorrow. Obviously, it's a district-paid holiday, so I will be there during the conduction of the test.
And so for Superintendent Ruppis, we'll just pay attention to your direction on how to respond after tomorrow. And I think we're all together, and I think I've heard you have shared as well, like, it's enough. Like, we wanted to change, we all wanted to change. And we hope that tomorrow is as successful as it possibly can be. If it's not as successful as it possibly can be, we'll just be interested in other opportunities, other options. Anything else? Go out tomorrow. Okay. We have the 2025, 2026 budget development for debt and insurance.
We always give opportunity for students to go. It becomes a late night, so he's checking with his.
And he's coming back, ladies and gentlemen. I like that.
Okay, thank you very much. So yes, this evening, the presentation regarding the budget development process is focused on our debt service fund and our self-insurance fund. I often call it the health fund, it's the same thing. These are funds that are maintained separately, and I'll provide you a slide that reminds you of that. This reminds you each time that I present that this is the cycle that we follow in terms of the budget development process. And so we start early on in January and start meeting with our leaders and identifying our needs within the system so that we can provide you with a comprehensive update. We then in March, April, and May begin providing these presentations to refamiliarize you with that which will ultimately be presented as a recommendation during the June meeting, the first meeting in June. And then the budget doesn't need to be approved prior to July 1, so that recommendation with a motion would be made during the second meeting in June. This is our budget calendar, and as you can see, we are highlighting that we have reached the April point in time. I referenced earlier that mid-May is when the legislative session ends and the state budget and any potential impacts to public education are made during that time. This is our fund requirements. I oftentimes provide you with the state statute that this is referenced within and impacting public education. And we are to maintain separate funds for a variety of reasons. And when we talk about operating funds, that's the general and teacher funds. We're allowed to have sub-funds, and we do that for ease and accountability in accounting process. And then our capital projects fund is grouped with them because the operating levy may be contributed to any of those three funds, fund one, two, or four. Our debt service fund is a separate fund, and we maintain a separate bank account for that as well. And you can see there are the purposes for each of those. Beyond this, we'll do that general and teacher fund presentation before the comprehensive presentation. So the first fund that we'll reference is the debt service fund, and I'm providing for you the bond fund connection. I first would like to mention that there are slide numbers. If you do have any questions and you want to jot notes to yourself, I'll journey through it, and then at the end, I'll pause, and we can go back to any slide needed. So the connection is that, as you see on that yellow box highlighted, that the voters approve a bond issue, and bonds are for major capital projects, whether it's building renovations or new construction. And the voters then would authorize the sale of bonds. And also, at the same time, any time patrons approve a bond issue, they're simultaneously approving the debt levy necessary to repay the principal interest and any fees on that. And so then investors have opportunity to buy the bonds, and investors can be large corporations, or they can be individuals within our very own community who are interested in purchasing bonds as an investment opportunity. And through that process, the loan is then given to the district. And those proceeds get deposited into our bond fund, which is maintained in a separate account. And from that, we begin paying any construction-related bills to support the bond projects that were approved. Then simultaneously, the debt levy is constructed for the repayment plan of all the debt based on each year. And for that, we're using those state auditor office calculation forms, the interactive process, and the loan is repaid using any debt fund balance. So obviously, in describing that process, that tells you the purpose of the debt service fund, to repay those loans. And the revenue is primarily generated from our local tax resources. There can be some additional revenue types that can be directly received into the debt fund. We're very limited on that, and that's all laid out in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Accounting Manual for us. And so we follow that very specifically. And I think that's probably all I need to really tell you about that one. We do, again, set the levy, and our levy must be set prior to October 1 each year. Our current levy for the debt service fund is 67.13 cents. And it's consistently calculated at a higher rate. And I covered this during the September presentation. But for this year, just for your understanding, this past September, the debt service fund levy actually calculated based on our needs at 86.04 cents. And then we rolled that back by 18.91 cents to the 67.13. So we could set it higher. We don't need to accumulate the balance in the debt fund, the debt service fund. And so therefore, we set it at that lower rate that had been referenced during a bond approval. And important to highlight that Senate Bill 190, the senior citizen property tax freeze, does not apply to debt service revenues. So the patrons who apply for that freeze, that will apply to operating dollars, but it will not freeze any increases in their assessed valuation and ultimate tax bill calculated on the debt piece of it. And I'm confident that many assessors and collectors throughout the state are challenged in figuring all of that out to navigate the calculations and keep that all separate. But that is what they've been charged to do, and we're anticipating special reporting to us as we move forward to understand the details behind that. So I mentioned that it's primarily the tax revenue. Everything that we do complies with Missouri statute, and also our board policy that supports that statute, policy 3320. As you know, we conduct a hearing in September, the September board meeting, prior to the board meeting, and that gives patrons an opportunity to speak to the board if desired. And the St. Charles County tax rates must be set by October 1 each year. I think I referenced that before. So some of these slides, you will recall from information that we provided, perhaps during the tax levy setting that occurred in September. But this slide just shows you our debt service fund expenditure overview by year. And you can see the golden box is highlighting FY '26. And so while, when we're making these budget presentations for you and developing out the FY '26 budget, sometimes we're talking about current year information, sometimes we're referencing what we already know. So in a situation like debt, we mostly know what our revenue and expenditure needs to be for next year and that's what we've highlighted for you. But what will change is any defeasance that would be applied to our current debt. So I mentioned to you previously, we'll bring you a recommendation in May to pay down some of the debt early with some excess balance. And so that will change that budget number for next year on our principal interest and fees payment. This slide summarizes for you our debt overview by series. So you can see each year that the debt was approved and how much is still outstanding. They typically carry a 20-year span for the debt obligation, that's normal. And then they carry a 10-year call date. So whereas you and I, if we have a real estate mortgage, we could decide to refinance when we see that the interest rates have hit a sweet spot and be able to reduce our overall expenditures relative to that. For us, relative to bond obligations, they do carry a 10-year call. So we aren't able to just refinance at any point in time. But by doing a defeasance, we can pay down early. We're still paying the interest on that debt, but we are able to retire it earlier. This shows you our debt amortization schedule. And I like to highlight, just to provide context for people each time, that as you can see, the green section there represents a 10-year span. And over the next 10 years, we will retire, absent defeasance, $123,495,000 of the total debt. We are very blessed in our community. I've shared this before, but we have bonding capacity, excuse me, we have bonding capacity. We are not reliant on residential properties. I worked in a district previously where it was primarily a residential community. And we were in a situation where our district was growing significantly, but we didn't have the bonding capacity to be able to borrow money. And so we have significant bonding capacity and ability. And as you can see, through paying down debt, we do have, we are very equipped for success in that regard should the board determine that changes need to be made in the future. This is the gross debt service schedule and this is a chart that's prepared for us by our bond underwriter and that's Piper Sandler. And it basically shows you year over year, the varying bond amounts for each of the issues. So again, absent any changes that we already know are going to happen, but I don't know what those are yet, we would be telling you that we have a revenue estimate of $29,427,986 for next year's budget and then an expenditure estimate of $27,687,700 with an estimated fund balance ending result of $27,881,943 for this current year. I did add in this slide, it's regarding bonding capacity. So I mentioned, you know, if you have a bedroom community and you don't have businesses that are helping prop up public education, that you can get, find yourself in a bind. And what districts need to do then, if they have needs in the district to protect the building assets, is seek a capital lease, basically. They pay a higher interest rate, you have to mortgage collateral. I know I've shared that in other presentations and context. But this is where I'm saying to you that we have, we're significantly blessed in this community currently. Based on this calculation information using the assessed valuation from December 31, the district could, if voters approved it, borrow near, just over $400 million to take care of building assets. So we're capped by Missouri Constitution and that's a 15% cap using that calculation process. 15% of assessed valuation data. Okay, so do you have any questions for me relative to debt? I know these presentations are pretty riveting and you probably want more.
Any questions?
Questions?
No questions, so let's go to the tax liability notice.
Actually, I still have another part.
Oh, the insurance.
Yes, we'll go to the health fund.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay. So for our self-insurance fund, again, you know, a district, there aren't very many districts in the state that are self-funded. I should share that with you first. And you can appreciate that whenever you are self-funded, then the district has the full liability and the responsibility of managing all the pieces and parts. Whereas there are organizations, businesses, that directly seek insurance coverage through Blue Cross Blue Shield or Cigna. And then you, they are pricing the premiums, the cost to the district or the business, based on what they believe would set them at a profitable state. And so with self-insurance, you are eliminating that middle profit branch of the insurance. And so for us, our self-insurance fund includes our employer contributions into the health fund as well as the employee deductions for medical and dental. And everything is used relative to health insurance costs. And I shared earlier that we do keep dental and medical separate. We maintain it in a separate bank account. We also, you know, again, overall, it should be reducing costs. It does allow for greater flexibility in terms of plan design. Whereas if you are partnering with a provider, they may have very stringent rules. So we still have to be responsible through that process. And we do rely on third-party providers and I'll reference those soon. But we carry all the financial risk. This shows you our revenue and our expenditure information and also expense reductions. So when our actuary with Marsh McLennan Agency, the district's broker, is looking at data, the preference is, is that the reductions relative to stop-loss insurance rebates or other rebates that we receive, that those are impacted on the expenditure side. We used to carry them on the revenue side. So it's a little interesting to look at it that way. But again, just that reminder that all the premiums that the employer pays or that the employee pays or that people who are participating through Cobra after they sever with the district or our retirees, they're paying that in there. We also attribute any interest income that has been accrued by, within that bank account, to this health fund. And due to the nature of how we pay a significant portion of our staff, and that would be our teachers who receive balance of contract checks in the summer, we do see a revenue spike that occurs in June. We then will pay those out through expenditure costs in the fall months oftentimes. So on the expenditure side, it's all the claims relative to health and prescriptions and the care ATC clinics that are provided for employee benefit and all the fees associated. And I referenced here that the expenditure spike typically occurs in the fall because there are more services oftentimes received during the summer months. And so this slide now shows you our 2023, 2024 revenue relative to employee premiums versus employer contributions and interest income. And so you can see that the employer contributions are significant at a total of $20,525,032, based on the current construct. The employee premiums were $5,597,828 for that. And so that would also include the retiree. Actually, I need to check on that. We may have left that off intentionally. So moving forward, this provides for you another breakdown, another slice view of all the claims and prescriptions and that type of things. So you can see the trend that occurred for FY '24 actual. And none of this, none of the expenditures referenced include the health savings account contribution. So that's another piece that we make contribution for, for people who are on the high deductible health plan, that they have that HSA account or health savings account that they can utilize to pay for out-of-pocket expenditures. And again, I'm noting that does not include the health savings account and a $4 million transfer from the operating funds that was done earlier this year. This provides you an understanding of the number of lives that we are providing coverage for and that total is 4,134 as of the data that was presented. There's a slight variance between medical and dental, but for the most part, those remain consistent from medical to dental. The third-party providers are those entities that assist us in doing this work. And so important to note that our broker does provide actuary services and helps us with our employee insurance meetings and informs us of what they're seeing from the data that is presented. And then we do not know any of the specifics about claims for employees. I always like to emphasize that. We pay others to administer all claims processing. And we get summer reports. We also get reports on the highest utilization on prescriptions and that kind of thing, but we don't see employee names. So that's all protected data and that's exactly how it needs to be. So as you can see, we have Cigna for medical, Express Scripts for pharmacy, Delta Dental, IMED for vision, and Tokyo Marine HCC for our stop-loss insurance. This visual helps you understand what happens if we do have exorbitant claims relative to stop-loss. And it doesn't cover everything and so we can max that out fairly quickly. This example just provides you an understanding of what each claimant, one through four, would result in in terms of a reimbursement. And as you can see, we ended up being capped on claimant four because we had reached the maximum that they would pay us, the million-dollar cap. So hopefully, that's helpful in understanding that. So for plan year 2025, our medical base option is $727 per month per qualifying employee and our high deductible is $662 per month for qualifying employee. The district is paying 100% of the employee-only insurance. And the district pays varying portions of the dependent insurance for both options. Retiree and Cobra participants pay 100% of their cost. And again, relative to the HSA, the district is contributing $1,000 for an employee coverage plan and $2,000 for family coverage to the high deductible health savings account each year. And for the current year, for your understanding, we've paid $1,712,000. And that did post to operating funds. It is not posted against the health fund, which is on my list of wonderings as to why we do that and should we change that behavior. So just for your understanding as well, we have a board regulation, 4540GE, and that text is listed here to help you understand that it's saying that the district shall pay at least the full annual single employee premium for the base option medical, low dental, and low vision. But then the employee has the opportunity to select their own menu of options and apply that bucket of funds toward what they need for their personal needs. That is standard in many districts over the years, that employee-only insurance premiums would be covered. There has been a trend in the most recent decade of there being more cost-sharing even for employee-only insurance. And we look at that data every year. We'll be updating our insurance committee participants with that information as well. Self-insurance fund premiums, plan year '25. This is showing you on a monthly basis and on an annual basis. Dependent on the plan selected, it shows you the varying contributions. And I've provided this data in the past. It was set up in a different format, but it's basically, I'll highlight the annual contribution. So for an employee, if no medical or individual-only medical is elected, then that would be a contribution basically of $9,028. But you can see the other variations leading up to if family medical is elected, it's $19,572 on an annual basis. I know this gets confusing and I struggled with this in terms of presenting the data to you. So I decided, okay, let me give you some examples. Because it's also hard to accurately project exactly what it's going to cost until we have new enrollments occur in, for the October 1 star date and then we can see how those calculations play out. So this first example is showing you where the medical option is the base plan for employee plus child. And in that situation, $926 is paid monthly and the employee out of pocket would be $485 for that plan. But if it's high deductible, it's showing you that the district's paying $1,00631 monthly and the employee's paying $3,3409. It's very, it's a very interesting setup is what I want you to understand by looking at these examples. The next slide, this is another example. And this is where the high deductible plan with employee plus spouse is selected. And in that situation, the district is paying $1,0233 monthly and the employee out of pocket is $3,0317. The example right below that is where the medical option is the base plan and employee only. And in that situation, the employee, the district's paying $774 and the employee has an out-of-pocket of $9917. And so those are monthly rates, okay? So you're following what I'm saying is that it's all over the place in terms of who's receiving what level of coverage in terms of a dollar amount from the district. And I'm not asking that you would completely understand it because it took me a bit to get my head in the game in terms of what it is we do here. Oftentimes, the way these are structured, there's not that opportunity. Like our board regulation indicates that you can take your bucket of money and allocate it wherever you want. Usually, in most districts, you pick a plan and here's what the district pays and here's what the employee pays. And it stays consistent for all employees, whomever picks that plan. Does that make sense? It is confusing. Okay, so the district contribution annual estimate. So what we're showing you here is on an annual basis, what the district is contributing, the total district contribution possible. And that causes us then to achieve those total dollar amounts. They're on the far right for base plan at $9,342,384 and for high deductible health plan, $13,376,868. The total calculated is $22,719 and that's assuming all funds are utilized by employees through their insurance selection process. And because sometimes that doesn't happen. And then the census information again is what is factored in in terms of calculating the total costs. The district is contributing approximately $4.8 million annually for dependent care coverage. So I mentioned to you before that typically, the employee is covered and in our district, we make a significant contribution towards dependent care. So this shows you, I won't belabor the amounts here, but you can see participation levels for medical premiums. The top is the base plan in the gray. It's a little hard to see on this screen. But then the blue section is the high deductible health plan. So you can see that in total, we have 936 employees participating in our current base medical plan and 1,083 participating in the high deductible health plan. The totals also are noted for each of those two types of plans for which the district pays those contributions. This next slide covers the dental section of that. And we have 2,009 participating in the dental plan. And also, I should mention, the green then below is the vision plan. We have 1,084 participating in the vision. I did include this slide that helps give you context on our retiree and Cobra participation. So you can see for base medical, we have retiree Cobra participation of 69 and for high deductible, 129. On dental, we have 182 participants. And for vision, we have 165 participants. So again, I know most of those slides are very confusing to process and consume. But overall, this slide, Slide 34, shows you the summary of our costs. And so you can see that the employee-only portion that the district is paying is representing currently $17,368,250, which is 57.21%. The district-paid dependent coverage is that $4,921,009 or 16.21% our health savings contribution. contribution that I referenced previously is $1,712 for a total district contribution of $24,1,259. That's 79.06% of all costs for the medical and dental and vision plans. And then the employee portion is $3,864,741, which is 12.73% of all costs. Retiree contributions, $2,491,928, which is 8.21% of all costs. So this is based on actual enrollment that was from our February 2025 census data. I've shared before that there is no legal requirement in terms of a reserve balance. I also would share that the industry standard, basically, or the general rule of acceptance is, it used to be that we would carry three months of administrative costs, so the overhead that would also include, like CARE-ATC and that type of thing, three months and then two months of claims. And that has changed recently, just based on utilization, and that's across the nation, I would offer. And now the recommended balance would be equal to three months of both claims and administrative costs. So based on current-year data, $7 million would be our desired minimum fund balance, reserve balance in the health fund. And I reported to you earlier that we are far from that, and that includes our $4 million transfer. So we have significant work ahead. Shared previously, the 23.5% increase is what's being called for at this point in time. That was reduced down by about a percent based on data through March. So this shows you what has occurred with our fund balance. And FY '24, our ending fund balance for medical was $1,159,728, dental $5,54817, reminding us all again of the $4 million transfer that was provided, and we need to take action to correct that trajectory. So this represents our current revised budget, and again, that includes information relative to a potential of an additional $4 million. It could be more that needs to be made in the current year to sustain the fund, to make sure that we have enough money to cover the bills as those are provided. We'll make the full recommendation, I would think, likely by June 6. Sometimes we've made insurance recommendations during the May meeting. I don't know that we'll be equipped for that this year at that point in time. I added in this slide. I went back and found the best data available to me, and what you can see is that we've consistently maintained very, very low increases over time. And we shared with you previously that based on actual utilization, we really needed to have increased at a greater level the past year and likely the year before that. So the preliminary increase, again, is noted at 23.5. The only levers we can push and pull include changes to the plan design, changes to the amount that the district would be contributing, which would push costs to employees. We are looking at all things, and we will have robust conversations. I've committed to you already that I'll keep you apprised through that process. I know we have Director Greider and Director Ponder, who will be serving on the insurance committee, so that's fantastic, but we'll help them in sharing what they learn, and then they can add additional commentary for you during board meetings. That concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Just looking back on Slide 25, you had mentioned that you were curious as to why some of that was coming out of the operational fund and not the health fund. And I share that same question. Is it possible to figure that answer out?
We wouldn't be able to opine on decisions of the past. It's a practice that I understand. I inquired about it with the Director of Finance and the Benefits Manager. It's a practice that has been in place for many, many, many years. It's different. I mean, it's not wrong. It's not illegal, you know? There's nothing like that, but it's just interesting that we would separate that out from the comprehensive health fund.
Do you think there's any benefit to investigating moving that offer?
Well, right now, it's consuming operating fund dollars, okay? And that's impacting our operating fund. Now, until just two years ago, I think two years, we were including the health fund within the operating fund from a reporting perspective, and we separated that out. And while some people may feel like, oh, gosh, wish you wouldn't have done that, for me, it's important that we monitor it separately and make recommendations that help it sustain itself. And so in my mind, that might be a recommendation that's brought forward for the board's consideration among a number of other recommendations.
Got it. Thank you.
So Ms. Emery, for clarification, on the slide earlier that showed the health fund with an approximate $3 million deficit after the $4 million transfer this year, does that include that 1.7, or that 1.7 would actually, if it lived with that, would increase the deficit another 1.7?
It would be worse. The deficit would be worse. It's currently being absorbed by operating funds. None of this is the news that you want to hear, and it's not what I want to deliver for you either.
So you also mentioned that we do need to take action. Are you kind of able to consult on those actions for us in the upcoming months?
Well, and that's exactly what will play out. We are receiving an update from our broker every month, and they're monitoring the data as quickly as they receive the information from those providers, Cigna and others, then they're looking at the data to determine what is the recommendation that's needed to create a sustainable fund for the upcoming year. We can't predict the massive claims that might be presented. I shared earlier, we've got one that's going to take a pretty good hit on the fund, and the fact that we don't have a reserve balance built up means that we'll need to do a transfer right away to pay the bills as they come in. So expect that, that we'll be making a recommendation in the coming, potentially next month. I don't have the insurance committee meetings established yet. I'm preparing an email to go to all the people to welcome them and thank them for their service, and we'll get those meetings scheduled, and the broker will then be equipped to start delivering the information. So yes, updates will be forthcoming.
Carol, we made that change to the plan. When was that, October?
Yes.
And we were running three months behind then. We're now into April, you have March data. The impact of changing that plan, have we realized the worst of it or not? What I'm trying to say is, you know what? Why it went up so much? Have we realized those costs already for the most part?
I hope so. That information hasn't been fully unpacked yet, and that's part of the work of the actuary in terms of being able to give us that comprehensive update.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I know. It is frustrating, and the actuary, Marsh McLennan Agency, they're doing the best they can, but we're all hostage, basically, until we receive updated data from the providers.
So it may not be much worse than $3 million, maybe?
I don't, I couldn't speculate. I couldn't speculate. I'd love to bring great news next month.
We'll give you one more chance.
Okay, yes.
Anything else? So moving on to the tax liability notice?
So in the past, I haven't approached the podium to talk about this, but because I was up here anyway, I decided I would hang out, and I'll just highlight for you, I did post text within the agenda item that reminds us all that there is a Missouri statute, 137.243, that requires that on or before March 15th, the county clerk is to send data to the taxing jurisdiction, so not just the public school districts, but other taxing jurisdictions. And then we take that data, and we run a preliminary tax levy calculation. And we are required to send it back to the county clerk by April 8th each year. And so it doesn't coincide well with our board meetings, but we did that work, and so we posted that for you, and that was submitted to them in a timely basis. So basically, it's indicating currently, and this is using the updated assessed valuation data that they provided us that was certified March 2025, that our projected tax rate for our operating would be 3.2777, and again, our debt would be 0.6713.
Okay. Anything on that topic? Or any state audit update on recommendations?
Okay. So the slide deck, there's not a really great way to provide the updates, other than to just help everyone remember what the recommendations were. And so it's constructed, basically, to provide you a reminder of what the recommendation was, followed by what we provided as a response to the audit, and then the update, the current update. So this reminds us that the state audit was received December 2024. Notification of the state audit had originally been received by the district in April of '23, and you'll recall, it did take a number of months for that to happen. We learned from the state auditor office that they had some significant turnover in staff, and also, the primary lead on doing the research retired December 31 of '23, and so that delayed them significantly. The scope of the audit that was included, it was through June 30, 2023, or they may have reached further beyond that. So it was not necessarily limited to, but mostly focused on June 30, 2023. And again, we received the report at December 2024 and provided them our responses on the recommendations. And this represents the seven primary categories that were included within the state audit, the first being Proposition S. And here is the base recommendation that full transparency would be provided for all existing and future capital projects, and that we would ensure that the board is fully apprised and receive the information timely for the board to evaluate the project. And I have included, in some cases, there's a 1.1 and a 1.2, that type of thing, so that's why you'll see different slides as well. And so relative to that, our response at the time was to highlight that back in March 16th of '23, a comprehensive report to the board was provided on all the changes that had been made internally in terms of the process and seeking board approval and providing consistent updates. We, you know, highlight for you that new operations leaders provided the board a comprehensive update during the September 21, 2023 meeting. And during a March 14, 2024 meeting with the Board of Education, a recommendation was provided removing projects forward. We are providing bond financial information monthly, and that the board is approving all the required steps of projects if the protocol allows for that. Now, an example this evening was when we use a purchasing entity. They have the bid process. They've developed that. That's why we brought it as a separate agenda item, so that the board could then approve it, so we don't have each of those stop signs that are now reflected on this page right here. That was information from that March 2023 report to the board on the opportunities for the board to review the specifics and vote to allow us to move forward. So that work was very significantly changed by new administration, and we are behaving that way with all of our projects. So that's really the update, that there is no further action from our perspective on this, that we changed the behavior, we're following the protocol, and that's our commitment to you as we move forward. So 1.2 was regarding ensuring that the selection process is equitable and transparent, and qualification requests do not unfairly limit eligible candidates. And that was, if you read the audit report, it was specifically relative to a certain contractual arrangement. And at the time, when we responded December 2024 to the recommendation, we indicated then that we have protocols in place to ensure that that behavior is not occurring. We also remind you that we added a new purchasing manager position that was approved July 1 of 2024 to support the requirements, and that that individual will also begin assisting on construction-related projects. We did also, part of that recommendation was that we would ensure that we're seeking an architect process in terms of selection. And so we did let an RFQ, a request for qualifications for an architect, May 2, 2024, and I've indicated within this slide that we had 11 firms respond. We interviewed five. That was by a team of board members and administrators, and had a recommendation approved June 6 to approve Hollis and Miller Architects partnering with RTM Engineering and McClure Engineering. And so at this juncture, we believe we have corrected that path, and that no further changes to the process are needed at this time. On item two, safety drills, ensure the safety drills are conducted, and I will just say to you, for our December recommendation, we would indicate that that would take place. The unfortunate situation in that is the safety drills have been performed, but we didn't have the documentation as buttoned up as it should have been. And so we have ensured, and the update for today is that we are making sure that those have taken place. I checked in with Mr. Stutzer. As you know, we went through a safety audit and had a physical safety report to you in closed session, and then we had the threat assessment piece reported during the open session meeting in December. We also recommended to you that we would have a new Director of Safety and Security for July 1 of 2025, and you approved that. We're thrilled about that new position and the assistance that will be provided. But in the meantime, our update to you is that we have indeed, and I keep hitting the wrong button on this, Scott, that we have indeed changed our process, and we've ensured that we have appropriate documentation for all of our drills have been conducted. We have a few more that need to be conducted because of snow days that had occurred, and those will get caught up. For attendance, the recommendation was that we implement additional controls and procedures over the data and restrict the time period when changes can be made without authorization and reviewing available reports, limiting user access. And so we had a few instances where we did have opportunity to tweak that. The response at the time to the recommendation in December was that we would form stakeholder groups to address all those needs, and that would include building and department leaders that collaborate together to ensure we had an efficient process for collecting data and also ensuring that access levels were appropriately addressed. Now, one of the things in our system that is a gatekeeper for us is when an employee severs from the district, their access is shut down. Even if they're still on a list of having access, they can't access anything. So that was a nuance of that recommendation that we still understand, and we'll do what we need to do to make sure that's taken care of. So I'm happy to report in this update that the stakeholder meetings have occurred. Leaders have identified the most efficient process for collecting that attendance data and managing it on a district-wide level, and we have a routine review process also implemented. To help you understand that, the leaders that are over these systems, they have perpetual calendars that maintain all the lists of things that they need to make sure are happening, either monthly, quarterly, annually, whatever the case may be. For attendance, this was a secondary recommendation that we correct attendance records for any coding that had been improperly reported. And there was some minor information that was identified, where we had students that had, they were absent from school for college visits, and the coding within the system was such that we claimed attendance when we should not have. The absences were allowed and approved by their parents, but we should not collect. And in the state of Missouri, attendance matters structurally and also from a foundation formula payment process. So that was corrected early on. In the middle of the audit, it was identified for the '22, '23 academic year, those corrections were made, and we implemented systems to shore that up, to make sure that that didn't happen further. And our update now for you in April is, again, that these stakeholder meetings have occurred to collaborate on ways to ensure that we're doing the right things, and I'll reference, Scott Gowan has taken the lead on that technologies. Technology is under his purview. It does involve other leaders throughout the system, including our principals. The review of codes will be conducted annually, so that's part of his process now. And attendance codes will be standardized relative to elementary and secondary schools. There will also be personnel with added access, and they'll receive special treatment. For district financing, this is a recommendation that is in most school district audits provided by the state auditor office. And that is that the board would consider in the future that there be open competition on any future bond sales. And so we have negotiated sales and we have open competition sales. And so at the time of the December 24 recommendation, we indicated that the board and administration commit to ensuring that the appropriate sale methodology is applied. And the reason it's worded that way is truly that will need to be a decision of the board at the time any bond issue is navigated in the future because there are pros and cons to both pathways. And no one can arch your quarterback and really proclaim that an open competitive sale is better for the district from a strategic planning perspective, long-term, because you get boxed into when your payments are due and that kind of thing. Whereas with a negotiated, you know how you need your payments to play out so that you create a financially sustainable process and you can ask for bids on those certain sale moments. So that's why we worded it the way we did in December, and we believe there are no further action items to be addressed at this time. For accounting, cash handling, controls and procedures, I will tell you that I'm never surprised when opportunities present themselves for improvements to internal controls. And so I appreciated the opportunity for us to do a bit of a deep dive on this. This says ensure district procedures are consistent, formally documented and communicated to all employees responsible for cash handling. On this one in particular, so 5.1, we explained that new leaders have worked to improve process. But interestingly enough, we have a shared drive for our administrative assistance. And I'm not, we don't know with whom the state auditor representatives spoke, but there was confusion as to where the information was located. And it's always been in the shared drive and they have routine training sessions. And so I felt like there was a little bit of a gap in communication there. And so we said at that time that we provided a follow-up communication. We've added including building principals to that communication so that there is complete clarity. This is where the procedures are located. These are the training sessions and invite them in for that. So we'll continue to make sure we're doing a great job on communicating with the teams that are involved in handling cash and that type of thing and also keeping those building principals apprised too. So no further changes are recommended at this time. And, but it is an ongoing thing. That's the thing I need to highlight for you. And so then these three items, 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4, that were part of the recommendations, has to do with segregating accounting duties and ensuring money is properly received and all of those things. And so typically, when an auditor comes in, they'll pull a swath of items and transactions and do a deep dive to establish if those have been appropriately handled. And it's not uncommon that there are some gaps in what may be taking place. And so at the time of the December response, we said that a third-party consulting engagement is planned to review all of that and to help us navigate that. And that review did occur in December and January. And I've noted that there, that we have recommendations. We're reviewing those now. And we will be implementing any of those recommendations that are applicable for us. Also, all petty cash amounts have been audited. That was one of the findings, that we hadn't done that. And that's been separated out now on the general ledger balance sheet, which weren't maintained separately in the past. So no further changes beyond that, beyond our perpetual calendars and continual monitoring, that type of thing. So another recommendation, item six, for payroll and personnel, establish a formal annual leave schedule for senior administration. And, excuse me. So at the time of the audit, when the response was provided, we indicated that yes, we would develop that formal leave process and that it would be communicated and any update toward policy would occur as is warranted. That could also include regulation. That probably should have been noted in that. And so our update for you for April is that the formal annual leave procedure was developed December 2024. That was appropriately addressed. And as you well know, December 12 is when the board approved a new policy and regulation relative to board appointing committees. Then we went through the process of having bylaws approved in March. And just this evening, you approved the formation of the committee members to serve on that. So at the next available board policy meeting, committee meeting, that information will be provided, I would expect. So, so for that, so other than that and bringing that back to you for approval, that's, that will tie a bow on that. So this last, this next one, 6.2, was with regard to complying with IRS guidelines for reporting fringe benefits related to personal and commuting mileage. And so I will say that this one, when we provided the response December 2024, we indicated that procedures and policy will be updated to reference compliance with the IRS publication. There are multiple options in terms of how it's handled. And what I learned is that the key question that someone had answered, and I understand that there were multiple leaders who are no longer here that were interviewed by representatives of the state auditor office. The question was posed, are these employees required to drive the vehicles home? And that's the bright line in terms of how you handle it from a taxation perspective. The whole reason that our security employees and our facility employees drive vehicles, have vehicles that are provided them that they drive home is so that they can be those first responders and address emergent issues that occur in the middle of the night or at whatever point in time and that they are fast to respond and make sure that we do not have disruption to instruction. And so after further significant discussion with leaders and evaluating the IRS publication, our update for you is that, and there are seven people that we're talking about, that we believe that our current board policy that covers how we have been consistently doing this and taxing this, Board Policy 3191, that that does not warrant further change and we do not need to change our behavior. What I will tell you about the gap in the two calculations is, if you're provided a vehicle because, let's say, it's the CEO of a company and they're provided a vehicle, it's part of their benefits package, right? And they end up being taxed based on the market value of that vehicle. And it could be a pretty significant tax obligation, no different than if they're receiving the salary equivalent of that. Whereas the calculation process that we deploy for commuting value, that that is a minimus. It's a minimal taxation for these employees. So they are taxed so that any value that they have of not having to drive their own vehicle is appropriately referenced on their W-2. And it, again, it provides a greater benefit for the district than it provides for the employee, is what I would offer to you. From our perspective, no further action is required. That certainly could be a discussion that you might have relative to that. Go ahead and I'll keep moving and wrap it up, and then we can go back to any. So the next recommendation was ensure employment records are maintained and complete for all employees. And that's always our goal. We provided information during the December response that we would develop queries. Many of those already exist. We just needed to do a little more, right? Go a little further with it. And so our, we were going to form a group to work through checklists and that type of thing. And also, we noted December that, beginning in the '23, '24 fiscal year, the team recommended and the board approved us implementing Vector Solutions K-12 Training System. And that's a, it used to be called Safe Schools back in the day for districts. And that's a system where we online go in, and I believe you also participate in some of that training. But we're able to receive those mandatory trainings that ensure that all employees understand policy and federal law and a variety of expectations. And so that had been implemented. That addressed part of what the state audit was referencing. But now we're telling you that we had a team of leaders and staff meet to identify additional queries that might be implemented to ensure that all fields are appropriately populated. The human resources data queries are in process of being developed and we're analyzing payroll queries. We'll have that routine audit process to ensure a full deployment of the query applications is working and identify any future gaps of data. So all of that, again, will be placed on perpetual calendars to make sure that we don't misstep on this opportunity to keep the data clean. So this next one then, it kind of is like that previous one on attendance where it's saying limit user access in the payroll and leave systems. Again, we know that people are dead-ended when they leave the system. They cannot log in and therefore, even if they're still listed, they cannot access these applications. But we're doing all we can to continue to shore that up. So at the time, we said that we would make sure that that was happening, that there would be a supervisory review of all new employee profiles and periodic review on proper assignments of access. Our update is that a review of user access has been conducted. Appropriate access levels have been granted. And again, that's on a perpetual calendar for future monitoring by the responsible leader. The last one is district property. The Board of Education provide guidance to building officials to ensure property records are complete and consistent. And we committed in December that we would form a stakeholder group. I also did include information relative to engagement with Music, which is the Missouri United Health Insurance Council. That is our property liability coverage for the district. They have no requirements of maintaining property listings and that type of thing. In the event of a total building loss, there are ways to identify all the things that we would need to be reimbursed for. We did check to see, I think I might, did I list it there? Yes, we did a preliminary estimate on what it would mean to have a third-party provider come in and conduct an inventory assessment of all things in the district. And that would cost approximately $110,000. And the value that comes from such an assessment, we just did not feel it warranted a recommendation for that. So a meeting was held with all senior leadership team members to discuss the best approach for this. And I will tell you, what I learned is that a variety of our principals are maintaining lists. They have different processes. There might be Google Sheets. I've had them email me all of that information so that we can identify a standardized process that will be the least intrusive for our principals and our teachers or others that would be helping to maintain those lists. But that we would get something established. The commitment is that we'll get that done by the end of this year and that this will, again, be added to our perpetual calendars for an annual review to make sure that we are hitting the mark on that. So that was a lot. And I am happy to answer any questions. That basically restates that district and board leadership has changed significantly since 2023 and that we have done a lot of work to ensure we're doing things as we should in Francis Hill.
Any questions?
Yeah, Caroline, you were talking about the petty cash and all that. You said there was no further action taken, but you said it was ongoing. So can I, can we just be sure that at least once a year, maybe when the school year starts, that the building principals, whoever oversees that cash, gets that training?
That absolutely. I may not have articulated that well, but definitely that is part of our communication with the administrative assistants. And we're very limited. I don't recall if it had the number in there. We really don't have petty cash in very many buildings at all.
Are PTO funds? I don't know.
Yeah. And so, but yes, we will continue to emphasize that training and it will be occurring likely more than annually. There are different times during the year when students aren't in the buildings and it provides us opportunity for professional development. And oftentimes, any of those finance administrative assistants will gather in this building, in this very space oftentimes for that training.
Going back to the cars.
Yes.
And the seven people, and now they have to track daily mileage.
Well, no, we're going to continue the process that we had in place before, where they identify the distance from their, their home to their standard place of employment. And I don't want to misspeak on that, but that's the basic calculation on which they're taxed. So the taxation is very minimal for them.
I thought there was a formula where the IRS said you just need to impute this, this amount.
Well, the, the information that we have researched indicates, again, that you can take the path of the market value of the vehicle.
No, that's not good.
Yeah, that, it's, it's not a good option. And it, it, it doesn't meet the needs of our system. So I personally just feel like, I don't, again, I don't know the person. I don't know who it was that the auditor representatives engaged with. I don't, I don't know why the answer would have been they aren't required to drive their vehicles home because that's the whole purpose of them having the vehicles, so.
Right, right. Yeah.
Or response to.
Well, years ago, it was always, if you use the car for work, mainly work, they know you're going to use it personally. So just impute 1.7%, whatever it was. And made it just so much easier so that you didn't have to track every mile because it gets a little tiring. Okay.
We did have our, those with the vehicles begins taking that daily process, applying that daily process beginning last, this past January so that we were equipped to implement the new process. And after further discussion and research, we, that's not our recommendation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We have superintendent comments.
Our student is going to leave us. So just thank you for being so.
Thank you so much. He sat through three hours of a board meeting and left right before Ken Rumpus started talking. Don't take it personally, Superintendent Rumpus. No one ever stays for, no one ever stays for that Rumpus conference.
I think that was a record.
Thank you, President Blair. First, I want to thank, you know, I don't enough thank this team for the work they do preparing for board meetings, you know, Ms. Embry being at the podium tonight for multiple presentations. There's a lot of departments in this group providing input, but that was a heavy lift this month. And then also Ms. Simpkins, who, we all need natural breaks during this meeting. But the number of drafts of the calendars for the next two years that we as a team have reviewed and gone through and the hours put into that, it's pretty unbelievable. And so we continue to be open to the feedback. And in an ideal world, we wouldn't be bringing you new calendars each year. But as we get better information, we want to do them. So Lisa, I just thank you while you're out of the room. I do want to take one moment back to North. I just want to say, it's hard sometimes when there is a topic that we're trying to look at objectively when we know that involves people and feelings and health. And I, I think the one thing that stood out to me tonight, that you receive emails, as did we, that we have employees who felt either A, that we weren't validating what they were experiencing or the concerns they had. And I know that was not the intent of our team. I hope it's not the intent of any of the vendors or partners we work with. But we will continue to think about that as we move forward. That at the end of the day, we're talking about staff and students and their health. And we need to look at it objectively and the different pieces of it, but also remember that this is people and human work, and that's a big part of it. So we're all hopeful that tomorrow, there's information or something else that we find moving forward. And if not, we'll continue to work with the board to look at what immediate next steps may be for us as a team. Speaking of North, I also want to take this opportunity to recognize Principal Fletcher and the admin team and staff at Howell North, who, a couple of weeks ago, when the rising floodwaters forced the cancellation of prom, literally minutes before prom was beginning, had to make a very difficult call, but it was needed to make sure that our students and our staff were safe that night. I want to thank the amazing North community for how they really responded to the news. Our students and families, while they were disappointed, there was overwhelming support and accepting of the decision. And our local businesses really stepped up, whether that was tuxedo and formal wear companies, florists, other vendors that said that they would cover the costs or they would provide things for our students when problems did happen. I also want to thank the board. As that was happening that evening in real time, the board stepped up and actually was prepared to try and put an event on at Howell North. And there was offers of DJs and pizza and other things. And unfortunately, with the timing, we just. And unfortunately, with the timing, we just couldn't make it happen, but it was a great moment of one Howell, people coming together, really focused on trying to make that happen for North. And, you know, we're all happy that while we're here this evening, that hundreds of our knights are over at Old Hickory celebrating prom finally this evening. So that's great. As I mentioned last month, our senior pals, who are our residents age 55 and older, our last event of the year, they are invited to join us on Wednesday, May 7th at Howell Central. It'll be the middle school cupcake war event. Those pals will get to be VIPs at that event. Teams from each of our middle schools compete in the bake-off where their cupcakes are judged based on their taste, originality, presentation. So if you or someone you know is interested in attending that event, all of the information is on the district website and social media, and we'd love for people to sign up and join us that evening. The Francis House Central Library was just recognized this week for earning the distinction of exemplary school library program from the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It was the third year in a row that the library program at Central has earned this distinction. Only six libraries in the state of Missouri received the award this year. So that's exciting for them, and we hope to have them here with Representative Gessi next month for the board meeting to celebrate them in person. Congratulations to our Hall of Fame winners. As you have been seeing, we had over 130 nominations this year, and the committee worked through all of those nominations and selected nine very deserving recipients. We will get to celebrate them on May 12th at the Hall of Fame Awards Ceremony, but there's a fantastic video that our communications department put together highlighting each of the winners and when they were celebrated. And so if you haven't seen it yet, I encourage you to check out the district's Facebook page where you can see that. As a reminder for everyone, that there is no school, and the district is closed tomorrow for a spring holiday. Our students will return to class on Monday. And last, I would also like to welcome Vice President Greider and Director Olkey to the Board of Education. As I said, on Tuesday evening, the demands of school board service really are significant and have an incredible impact, a lasting impact on our students and our community. And I really believe it's one of the greatest service opportunities that you can do. And so thank you to the two of you for joining us, and always, thank you to the seven of you for the work that you do as board members. Thank you.
More comments?
I have something. I have a request for you, President Blair, and that is, I'm asking for some type of a forum, such as a special-called work session or the board retreat, to discuss the future of the resolution against racism and discrimination. And I was hoping that next month, you could let us know how we could proceed on that.
I appreciate, are you suggesting some kind of a different setting than an ordinary board meeting where it could be discussed?
I didn't know if the retreat or a special call meeting.
Right. I will look at options. I'll talk with Superintendent Rumpus and see if there's options for those kinds of meetings, and I will share the May meeting, which avenue we can take to discuss it for now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the point in time where we can ask for items to be added to the May agenda?
I think, yeah, you can share what you're thinking of. We can take a gauge of the people here.
Okay. I, I was just kind of concerned or inquiring.
Motion.
Oh, I need a motion.
Are, Sarah, before the meeting next month, you can email President Blair and ask him to put it on the agenda? Hey, he and Dr. Rumpus, who developed the agenda? You can ask him to put it on then. If you make it now, what I've been told is you need a motion. I mean, if you want to go through that now, that's okay, but I think the easier way is just to ask the two of them, unless you want board approval to put it on.
Right.
I gotta learn, I'm learning.
No, it's okay, it's okay, no. I still am too.
Yeah, I, I would like to put it on, if possible, because that gives everybody some time to gather whatever information.
You can make a motion, then, make a motion for what you want to.
I make a motion.
Okay.
I am so sorry.
Wow, your first meeting, you made a motion.
I would like, I know, I'd like to make a motion to add an item on the May agenda.
Do you have to say what that is?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I am wondering, I was looking over, as a new board member, I was going through a lot of the policies that are currently in board docs, and I was concerned about several policies that may have impacts on our students and impacts on our staff. And one of those that came to mind was 6310. I'm concerned that maybe that there is a lack of accountability in terms of how that policy is holding up over the time that it's been active, how is that serving our community or providing a disservice to our students and/or our staff, and if it has become an unfunded mandate at this point in time. So I was concerned, if it were possible, could we ask our library staff to analyze the effectiveness of this policy and its impact on our district staff and students? And if so, can we please get that pulled together and something we can address on the May agenda?
So what I'm hearing you say is you're wanting a agenda item on May where we discuss the pros and cons of 6310, and what might be changed or something like that, is that?
Yes.
So that's the general?
So make that motion.
So that's, so your motion is to discuss 6310, the pros, cons, possible changes at the May meeting?
I would like to make a motion to add the discussion of policy 6310 to the May agenda.
Yep.
Say your second?
Second.
So a motion by Sarah, second by Amy, all in favor to discuss, any other discussion about that?
First of all.
All in favor to discuss 6310 at the May, are you looking? President Blair, may I offer some? Please do, yeah. We'd be happy to explore this further. I'm a little concerned about the timeline of getting a group together to get the feedback to be prepared to discuss it with you at May. I mean, we can, we can work to gather that information if that's the direction of the board. I'm just not, it's a busy time of year. We may be able to come in May, prepare it with all the information, and we may not. That makes sense. But if, if the direction of the board is to talk with librarians and explore and get the information, we can actually begin that process. I'm just.
What's, what's a more realistic timeframe for you to gather information, like that in June, July? Or could it even?
Yes, I feel like.
Or could it even be part of our June retreat?
Yeah. And there's a chance by May, I don't, if you're open to it, if we're not prepared at May, I mean, we could share the feedback, it's just.
Well, could we have librarians at the meeting that would give us information?
So generally, the librarians would not come and speak directly to the Board of Education. We have curriculum leaders and a coordinator of library that would work with that group to gather the information, and then we would share that information back with the board.
I thought maybe they could do testimonials or something.
I think in that case, you might be asking more for a work session to discuss it, but again, normally, the board would work with the administration to gather that information to. Would it be more reasonable to not require a complete thorough, where you've talked to every single librarian, but maybe you've talked to two or three at different levels?
Yeah, at each level.
In other words, more of a, here we're having, just email, asking them just to email their findings you just shared. Happy to initiate the process if that's directed at the board, and I think we can share the information that we have, and if we're at a point that it would be appropriate for an agenda item in May, we could do that, and if we need to hold it until, you know, as a reminder, we have two meetings in June. We have one the first week of June as well as the third week, so.
So do you want to remove your motion?
What do I need?
So one option might be to remove your motion to put it on the agenda and just realize that we were asking you to, see if you could put it on there.
Removing it.
So instead of a formal mandated motion to replace the request.
I, I removed my motion.
Yes.
Oh, gosh.
So it's not a motion, so it's just.
Place the discussion.
Place the discussion. If you could do the research, I would appreciate that.
Yeah. So then I'd like to confirm if it's the direction of the full board that you would like us to explore that with the librarians to get that feedback.
I mean, what 6310 has.
It's the, writing down all the information, all the books that are coming into the school district, and just asking if that's the right process, or if there's a different software or different thing. Like, so right now, every single librarian has to adopt the entire information for every book, even if it's been approved another library, and so the question is.
See if it's unwieldy.
Yeah.
So as part of that discussion, would it include outside expertise to probably help the librarians in such a process?
Could you?
Yeah, or analyze.
So it could be.
Or analyze the process.
Yeah, it could be members of the community commenting on that too.
Yeah.
Yep, I mean, or, I would like to just find out too, I mean, what does the student impacts of it almost a year, so that that policy has been in effect? How is it impacting our students? How is it impacting our staff? Is it serving us? Is it not serving us? Is there a burden? Is it an unfunded mandate? These are, I guess, it's just kind of part of that accountability process when we look at policy at, you know, at that 12-month mark. You know, is the policy working?
Right.
Yeah, because that impacts every, I mean, it impacts parents, it impacts students.
So instead of a formal vote, if I just thumbs up, thumbs down, is that a picture of the general desire of the board to discuss it at the May meeting?
I thought it was June.
May.
If they can get it, we have two meetings in June.
So I can go, I don't have to ask you to repeat. I think we can go back and listen to understand the questions of what you'd like us, the information you'd like us to gather. There's a consensus to do that. The reality is, it, thinking about next steps as well, it isn't a policy, and so I think the discussion would be then, is it based on that feedback, a policy provision that would go to the policy committee that would come back to the board as opposed to just coming back to the board for discussion? So we can capture that information, share it with the board, and then talk about the appropriate next step. So we're not going to solve the problem, or if there is a problem on May 27th, or then not, not between, something at the May meeting, it would just be, you're aware, how's it going? And then if there's a solution or action step after that, we get decided. Thank you.
Thank you.
Others?
Yeah, my welcome to Amy and Sarah. Congratulations on winning a tough race. Anybody who has run for office knows exactly what I'm talking about. I look forward to our meaningful conversations that I know will be held with respect even when we are in disagreement. I look forward to working with you and sharing ideas and vision for what is best for our students. I know you may have questions moving forward, and I, I want to offer my help. I know that President Blair and Treasurer Owens will answer all of your questions, but if I can offer anything of a historical viewpoint, I'd be happy to, since I'm one year older than those two. Now, that was meant to be funny, so please don't go back to your computers and start telling me how old I am.
How are you, what does that mean? I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I'm a one-year older.
Or you're wiser.
No, don't take this personally.
You're one year older than me, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what you told me I was, but let's not go there. Let me, let me get through this, okay?
Good, good.
My many thanks to Dr. Kevin Morrison, I'm sorry he isn't here, for his hard work and heavy lift on a district-wide cell phone usage policy for the board to review. Dr. Morrison include all stakeholders in the process. First, he sent out surveys to get a gauge of the expectations of those in the district. The final team to draft and approve a policy included teachers, parents, administrators, and a member of the board. Throughout this process, I gained much respect for Dr. Morrison for not only the work that was performed, but his ability to run orderly and productive meetings. Those two don't always go together. His talents were apparent throughout the entire process. It's my understanding that next year will be a type of practice year, meaning that the proposed policy will be adopted as a trial to see how it works over the first year. The last, the last item on, on my talk that I wanted to give was about the odorant FHN, but I think, I think that's been addressed. So I, so I won't go into that, that diatribe. So anyway, thank you and welcome.
President Blair, may I respond to one thing? Director Pushkar, just to provide clarity, that we did not pass a policy, we put a process in place.
I said proposed policy.
Proposed, fair enough, but I just, I don't want anybody to think that we pushed a policy through without board approval.
Yeah, no. But it is, it is written up as, as a policy, but it's not coming to the board until after a trial year.
Thank you. Others?
I just wanted to ask a question, I guess, a question and then a recommendation or a request, I guess. I know we've talked a lot about Brain Pop. I wanted to see what we need to do to be able to consider that for reinstating that, refunding that for next year, what that would be. So again, similarly, I think to what Sarah was saying, if we can get some feedback or figure out if that, you know, can fall within the budget, I'd like to revisit funding Brain Pop. And then also, I just would like to get some clarification on whether or not in absence of a licensed funded version, if their teachers are still able to access the free version. There's never any policy around it. I know we didn't fund it again, but I think there's some confusion as to whether or not those resources can even be used right now.
There's a lot of Brain Pop videos.
Yeah, that are free.
Available on YouTube for free. So I think the question is, can our teachers use the free versions of Brain Pop, even though we've discontinued the subscription?
The paid version.
Yeah, I think it's based on the direction of the board. So previously, it was not approved, the request to purchase Brain Pop was not approved, and it wasn't necessarily about the money, it was about the resource. And so based on that conversation, the direction that we provided to staff was, please don't use Brain Pop free on YouTube, purchased privately, it's not a resource available. I think if this board is open to that, and we are happy to go back and tell teachers that they are able to access it.
I'd like to advocate for that. I just know how many teachers we have had really struggling with not having that resource, and I don't, if it wasn't part of a policy, I don't see why we would not let them use it.
Yeah, I think that, like, voting on that right now would be out of place, right? Because it's not on the agenda to discuss.
Can we vote now?
It's not a policy.
I would offer that there was never a vote, not to you, not allowing you to use about the resource. I would also offer, as the superintendent, that generally, we don't ask the board to vote whether or not teachers can use a specific supplemental resource. We have an internal process for approving that, so I think it would be more of a, what is the general direction and feeling of the board? We could work through what that looks like on a practical side on our end.
Okay.
But I heard too, I hear that question, but then I also heard questions about.
Refunding.
Or, or.
Moving forward.
Paid version.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, because I, I know that, I thought that the Brain Pop was just a financial thing. I didn't realize that it had a overreaching, and I know as a teacher myself, I'm always looking for resources to supplement.
It's a real handicap for.
My curriculum is, and if it's available to teachers for free on YouTube, which some videos are, not all of them, but some are, I think, or I know as a teacher, I use it at my school where I teach, and it's very helpful, and the kids really love it.
I think we need to talk about it.
But what are we, are we?
So not, do we need to put it on the agenda?
It has to be on the agenda. But just quickly, there's been some executive orders and things that have come out that, you know, disallow certain topics, CRT, that, that sort of thing. I'm not familiar with all of them or even how far-reaching they are, but my only, my only caution was to be sure that that information isn't, you know, put in there for the kids to watch, because that can affect funding.
Absolutely.
So.
They don't, they don't discuss CRT.
I don't think our major, I don't know, I don't think our major concern was that resource in total. It was more some of the topics that were being covered in it. And now, like I said, there's, not repeating myself, might be better to have somebody look at it, make sure. But I know at that time.
Something that'd be fit really nicely on an agenda for an open meeting.
Right. And so we have two different issues. The first issue is to discuss it in the May meeting, for you all to just present, does the superintendent, by talking to teachers, want to add Brain Pop as part of the budget we have to vote on in June? Just what are the pluses or bonuses, and we get a chance to judge it based upon its merit versus any other pieces to it? So that would be a possibility for May is to discuss it, because we have to decide if it's on the budget or not.
So.
So the budgetary, is it feasible to put on the budget for next year, assuming that? And I mean, I'm just thinking from my own personal experience as a teacher in the classroom, I, you know, if I have any parents who have concerns, those can easily be alleviated by a permission slip, and, you know, and just respect for whatever those parents' wishes are. And I find that to be copacetic for everybody involved, but most, I would say, like 99% And I find that to be copacetic for everybody involved, but most, I would say, like 99% of the content is perfectly acceptable and valid and connected to curriculum. And a good supplemental resource, I think, for teachers to rely on. So I think what we're asking is, is can we find out if we can validate its use? Then can we put it on the budget if we can afford it? But then also in the meantime, until that happens, can teachers use any of the free videos, assuming they're using them with professional integrity and/or perhaps a permission slip if that's something that we need to consider?
So President Blair, to the first part of Director Olkey's question, is it consensus of the board? It sounds like you're asking us to next month, bring information about the pros or the cons of Brain Pop and what the potential costs would be if it were to be added back into the budget for next year? Ron, does that sound like something that could be put on an open session agenda?
That's your guys'...
But that's, I mean, would you support that?
Yeah, hopefully it's being up in the open session, absolutely.
And so I think to this, that, I think we have direction. I think to part two of that, though, administration did not make the recommendation to stop using it again. That came from a board directive around not continuing the purchase, which came with a clear directive of why we were not moving forward with the product. And so I believe it would be the board's purview to change or indicate that if teachers were interested in using the free version, that that would be acceptable.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need to thumbs up it?
Well, I think Sarah brought up a good point in the professional integrity surrounding that. Just make sure that, you know, you're using something that is live on the web, that is not something that we purchased. Make sure that whatever they're putting out there to the kids is, you know, common sense. Make sure that it's...
Pretty aligned.
Permission to whatever. I know. Absolutely.
Yeah. I think the teachers are all very cautious at this point about what they're doing, so I don't expect that would be a problem.
And there is an expectation that any instructional materials are previewed prior to being used in the classroom?
I'm a thumbs up on this for free resources for now. Anybody else?
Help the teachers.
Can we just do thumbs up? I don't think so.
He just needs a general indication. We're going to talk about whether or not we're going to refund it for next year. We've only got how many days left at school? So can we just give them a little nudge for the next month and a half or whatever they've got to just use those free resources?
It is hard to give you the general consensus of the board without voting. So that's why it's kind of a... Oh, Woody.
Can we do an informal vote?
Does anybody have a reason not to? How about that?
Right. I don't.
No.
No, no reason?
No, just everything that's already been mentioned.
We have...
All right.
And maybe it gets, maybe it gets to a point where the teachers are happy with the free version and we don't have to pay for it. It's our responsibility.
I don't know if there's enough material in that.
But we will have time in the May meeting to discuss pros and cons.
We'll provide the information we have to you, and if you choose to make an agenda item, we can...
Perfect.
Any other board comments?
Thank you.
No. Thanks, everybody.
I'm going to remind you. My promise mine will be short.
Oh, yeah. Here we go.
I'm going to hold you to that, Ron.
Welcome, Amy, to the board. And good luck to you all and enjoy.
Thank you.
And then I'd also like to say, the math students, one of those students made an awesome comment talking about how he didn't meet his own expectations. I'll paraphrase as best I heard. Didn't meet his own expectations, he fell short of what he wanted to do. So in a sense, he failed, but he stood up and he took the challenge, he's going to do better next year, which is a tremendous message that Captain Rumpus gave during your graduation speech last year, talking about failure should be part of education, should be part of life, learning from your failures and getting up and moving on. It's a tremendous message. It's an awesome attitude, and that's what we need to encourage, is failure is never final. It should just be learned from, and we should encourage students to learn from their failures and move on and achieve.
Huzzah.
His teacher probably taught him that.
Yeah, that was sharp.
That was short.
Anybody else, I just want to end with this. There's a SOAR Awards at Henderson. I want to thank the people there for doing that. It was just a great event. Appreciate Director Pushkar and Director Potter for being there as well. I want to point out that if you want to be involved in what's going on in this school district, one way is to follow every single school on Facebook. You'll find out that the Barnwell Middle School is having an art show next Thursday. Causeley Elementary School had a Battle of the Book where 12 4th and 5th graders read 12 Mark Twain books. Francis Howell High School had a congratulations for Scholar Bowl on third place finish in districts. Hollaback Middle School had a recent performance of Goosebumps, the musical. Just follow every school, there's so much good that's happening. And I wanted to list one last feature. There's a guy named Benny, elementary student in Central Elementary, who is one year cancer-free. And the whole school rallying around, and I just want to share this one sentence that was written by his mom to Mrs. Sarah Caswell. "I don't really know how to begin this, but what I do know is the woman is a treasure who must be protected at all costs. She saved us. We had become an unsure, insecure family. We knew we had so much to be grateful for, but we still hadn't found our feet. From the very first day, he came home smiling. He loved her," in all caps. "She has helped him find who he is now." Anyone who is familiar with chemotherapy probably knows the word roadmap. It's the term they use for the next course of treatment, what it will look like and what has saved his life. But Sarah Caswell has also provided Benny with her roadmap, but it's one that has taught him how to live. And it's much longer, and I just wanted to highlight Sarah Caswell, this one teacher. I could talk about all the names and all the stuff.
Every day.